All right. Time is 6:31. We'll call this meeting to order. Dan, would you like to lead us in the indication?
Let me borrow heads. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for giving us this opportunity again to come together and work on the issues that confront our small town. Grant us patience, wisdom, understanding, and desire to work your will. In Christ's name, amen.
(Inaudible)
Okay. Where's the last? Hold on just a second. Yeah, but they're supposed to have one for me. Conrad, do we have the proclamation? Cindy, where you at? She'll come up front.
Everybody can pretty much hear me. (Inaudible) whereas the Children's Advocacy Center for Rockwall County was organized in 2016 and provides trauma and palliative care for children in Rockwall County. And whereas the Children's Advocacy Center for Rockwall County is an interagency, multi-disciplinary partnership dedicated to providing intervention, hope, and healing for injured and neglected children. And whereas the Children's Advocacy Center for Rockwall County provides a safe, child-friendly environment for law enforcement, child protective services, prosecution, medical, and mental health professional, and collaborate within our own community to develop coordinated strategies to be more effective, supportive, and promote healing for victims of child abuse. Whereas through a national effort, Rockwall County can do numerous on purpose, one to get a child unvital, to raise awareness for those children fallen victim to abuse in the Midwest. And whereas this effort will provide injured and neglected children in our community and around the county to change their survival path in the future. Now therefore, we have resolved by I, through children, and children coming to this, we hereby recommend that this Child Abuse Prevention Network, and the City of Cleveland, should invite citizens to join in the national effort to raise awareness about children with child abuse in the Midwest. Well, if you don't know anything about the Child Advocacy Center, there are several of them around in that area. I've been telling my now, (Inaudible) my little daughter, who's now twenty-nine, but it was something that served as that child advocacy. And in town, in its given duty, but it helped her out, and I do want that. So I'm a major opponent, because I never put ten dollars, but I can do it as a law enforcement officer, I have that basis, in the Child Advocacy Center, and senior to the children, or adult, which is what we're trying to have. It's a great thing. (Inaudible) how to speak out, and what you can do, and look at the (Inaudible). (Inaudible).
Cindy, I know you're the representative here today, and you're capable of (Inaudible).
Thank you very much.
A few words for you guys.
I'm very proud that my community has backed up since the very beginning. We started (Inaudible) 2015, going around town, trying to raise awareness at Rockwall County immediately, it was (Inaudible). A lot of times, well, everyone, we were supposed to be by making up (Inaudible). That's on the (Inaudible). So I'll tell you, the last year, we started calling it the (Inaudible). And since people (Inaudible) (Inaudible). The experts say only one (Inaudible) (Inaudible). 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 You all need to hear it up, that we are (Inaudible). And I thank you so much for all your support.
All right. Rules of decorum are in effect, guys. We all know what that means. We need to try and treat each other with respect and act like adults over here. That's all we ask on that. Before I open up citizens' comments, I told somebody last week after the meeting that I would say something at this meeting, and I plan on doing that, okay? Last week during a discussion that we were having up here that was concerning water, I made a statement about certain members of the board over at RCH. I want to stand corrected and apologize to all the current sitting board members. I was unaware that the ones that I was talking about without mentioning names are no longer serving on that board. So those that are serving on the RCH board, those comments weren't for you, and I apologize. All right. Citizens' comments will now be open. Apologize if I mispronounced your name. Lauren, is it Fede? Did I say that correct? Okay. You'll just come up, state your name and your address, and there's a button on there to turn the mic on.
My name is Lauren Fede, and I live at 402 Cattle Baron Drive. And I'm here to talk on proposal 7.7. And if you don't know where 402 Cattle Baron Drive is, it is very near and dear to the proximity of this proposal. I am actually right across the street from this lot, so I have a close relation to how I would like the landscaping to be done in this area. I think it would be best to meet with the developer, to discuss further, so that we can come to a compromise, but we do have some opinions in mind, at least a ten to twelve-foot retaining wall made of brick or stone, trees that are already fully grown on both sides of that wall, and shrubs as well. Because at this point, we are not sure what businesses will be open over there, what times will be open, the light pollution, the noise pollution, and we want to make sure that we uphold the resolution that was passed already, and make sure that we are melding the commercial purposes and respecting the residential areas over there as well. I also came to talk on item 7.9, which is changing the desired language to required. I think that we would be remiss if we did not change that language, as we would find ourselves falling victim to the, at least one, if not two, of the seven deadly sins of gluttony and greed, in that we need to be mindful and intentional and thoughtful with what we are looking to approve, and not just approving what we desire, but what is required. Because we all know the difference between a want and a need. So that's it.
I'm here to talk about 7.7, 7.9, and 7.12. 7.7, this development is adjacent to the only means of ingress and egress from our development. Our road is narrow enough for two cars to go through. If a car parks on one side, two cars cannot pass through. It's a private road. And we need, I did not see a wall in the plat that was attached to the agenda, or the agenda packet, whatever you call it. So we need to make sure there is some kind of a division to prevent, if not discourage, parking on Cattle Baron, because they're very close, and we know that's going to happen. And we can't have that happen. It's just going back traffic, especially with school buses coming through there. I mean, it's going to be all kind of mess. So I didn't see anything in ways, in any kind of way, to divide that from Cattle Baron. So we need to make sure that that's taken care of with a wall, partial wall, trees, I don't know, but something. Preferably both. And for 7.9, I do support the agenda item to change the word desired to required, so long as it is statutorily, you know, something that we can do. And I'm assuming we put desired in there for some reason. If we didn't, I think that's weird. We spent all of that money gathering public input to the comprehensive plan, and we need to follow it. If we have things like desired, we need to, at a minimum, define what, how you can overcome that desired hurdle. So if a development wants to go in and be sub-one-acre homesites, they need to, we need to demonstrate to them, or outline for them, why, how they can get that, maybe it's a survey of everyone, one-mile radius around the development. I don't know. I know other cities do that. But, you know, and if most people agree, then that's fine, but if they don't, I think you got to stick with what the comprehensive plan is, and define how they can overcome that, if it's appropriate. And then for section, or item 7.12, the public trail network, I think I've done right, using state funds or other nonprofit funds I know are available, grants and whatnot, can help us. These types of trail systems are in very heavy use. There's the Rowlett Creek Trail. We use it all the time. It's super stupid. I have to drive all the way over there. We use the Turtle Creek, go all the way to Dallas. We can get barbecue while we're over there. Well, what the hell, why can't we have that here? You know? That's, it's extra stupid, that we don't have something. We got plenty of creeks. We could just make some trails next to them, where we could ride bikes, walk, ride horses. There is no place to ride a horse around here. That's extra stupid, too. We live in a rural area. So these were just my thoughts, and I am more than willing to volunteer my time and my twenty-seven years of project management experience to help put together a project plan and action plan, and timelines and schedules for you guys. Thanks.
My name is Tom Milner. I live at 641 Glen Acres Drive in Glen Acres Estates. I've been before this city council and previous city councils to describe the road conditions that are ongoing in our subdivision. I provided a zip drive with video of the road conditions last July that was supposed to be disseminated to all the city council members. However, I haven't received any confirmation that anyone actually viewed it. The last time I spoke, we were advised to contact an attorney to iron out the legal details with ownership of the road and the right of way and all this. However, the cost of such an attorney was prohibitive. We don't have enough to pay for that. Now, the road conditions since last July have continued to deteriorate. I'm the president, H.O.A. I can't collect enough money to do anything about it, and I have to continually put up with the harassment and exploitives concerning the road conditions, both inside my residence and out. And eventually, we are going to lose services if we don't get something done about these roads. The school buses won't go down there, trash trucks won't go down there, emergency services won't go down there. It's getting to where it's a safety hazard just to go down the road. And recently, there was a incident that one of my neighbors, that they had to call an ambulance, and they couldn't get an accurate reading on her heart rate until they got to the highway, because the road was so bad, because of the constant jostling. Now, if there's a way to expedite anything concerning this road, if there's any advice I can take, give me some direction, because we're at our wits' end, and it's just going to get worse.
David Black at 1419 S. Elaine, McLendon-Chisholm. Just 7.9 on the comprehensive plan. I like the noted changes in principle, to change from desired to required. I would hope for a red line copy, so citizens can review changes, and that if there were other changes, we know what they are. Also in the comprehensive plan, it has short-term, medium-term, and long-term action items. And the short-term action items are to be complete within three years of the plan, and in five months, it'll be three years. So I'm wondering, what is the status on the short-term action items in the comprehensive plan? And if you guys could use help to work the issues, maybe if you get some citizens, under guidance of planning and zoning and council, to get that done in five months. I know it's very busy in the city. That's all.
6:59, citizens' comments are closed for the evening. We'll move on to the consent agenda, which is items 6.1 and 6.2, which are the revised meeting minutes for March 12, 2024, and the minutes for the March 26, 2022. I'll entertain a motion to approve, or if we need to remove something, remove something.
I would like to remove 6.2, add to the consent agenda.
Okay. All right. I'll entertain a motion to...
That's making sure everybody's awake. I would like to remove 6.1 from the consent agenda items.
We'll start from square one. All right. 6.1, what you need on that one?
Mayor, we actually need to have to have a motion.
Have a motion.
Vote to remove them, yes.
Oh, we've got, we've got a motion to remove 6.1 and 6.2. I've got a motion, do I have a second? There was a motion for 6.1 by Councilman McNeil, a motion by Councilman Balcom on 6.2, both of them want one of them removed, and which one of you two just? And Dan seconded the motion, okay? All in favor of removing those from the consent agenda? Aye?
Aye.
Show that unanimous. All right. Brian, on 6.1?
On 6.1, the reason I want that removed is, I believe the last time we had this removed for discussion was to make sure that we were spelling out the i's and n's on the votes, and it looks like it's still the same, unless I'm missing it. I thought we were going to make sure we spelled out how every individual voted.
To be honest with you, they don't remember on that one.
It was missing the actual votes.
Okay, yes.
That was the issue.
Okay. Then if it's not revised, it needs to be revised again. Okay.
Sorry, I'm looking through these, and some of these do have the votes.
It should be off. Anything that's voted on should have.
And again, if I'm missing it, because I believe there were two sent out, so I may have looked at the wrong one.
It's at the bottom.
Yeah, but it needs to say...
Oh, it has to identify.
Who the two and who the three by name.
Understood, understood. Thank you.
All right. Direction on that, Conrad? You know, if you look at the bottom of some of those, it says failed. I use the example two to one, but it doesn't say who the individuals were that voted either way. We need to fix that. Is that the same thing we're having a problem with on 6.2?
6.2, you already (Inaudible). I thought Angela was going to be here, but Angela or her (Inaudible). I thought Angela was going to be here, because she already has the noted amount of votes that was voted on one of the items. It was like four, and it should have been a three-two. So she just needs to correct that, to amend that minutes.
All right. Michael, can we, we have to vote on each of them separately? Okay.
Unless you want to see that again, you can, you can have a motion that says with suggested changes, and then we'll make the changes. We'll include them in your packet, but they'll already be approved, so you can find, you can know that it was changed, but it won't be part of your total packet.
So I'm going to make a motion to make those changes, a motion to approve with those changes.
On 6.1?
On 6.1 and 6.2.
I've got a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Okay. Show that unanimous. All right. We're done with those. Give me two seconds. Now we'll move on to item 7.1, presentation on Rockwall County Strategic Plan. I didn't say anything in the beginning, folks, but we do have an honored guest here. Ms. Dana is here. She's a county commissioner here in Rockwall County, so I've known her for a long time. She's a very nice individual and has a heart for the county.
There you go. Mayor, ooh, mayor and city council members, and then everyone here in the audience, I want to thank you for allowing myself, on behalf of the Rockwall Commissioners' Court, to present the strategic plan for Rockwall County 2050. So...
(Inaudible). We're going to go into this, where everybody just takes a wine, and then get to this part. This is, this is the most exciting part of the presentation. But I wanted to kind of give you, give everyone a little bit of background and information of where we're at right now with the strategic plan. Rockwall County, I don't need to tell everyone in this room what the growth looks like, and what it has, and what is expected to come. So it came, last year, I started putting together, looking for a strategic plan for Rockwall County, and there was not one that existed. There had been several years prior to that, there'd been some impromptu groups that were meeting, and they were taking excellent notes, but nothing really ever took it to the next level for a strategic plan. And then in doing so, I said, well, I want to look at other strategic plans in the state of Texas. And guys, there's only about thirteen strategic plans that counties have in the whole state of Texas, and most of those are all large counties. So then I dug a little deeper, and I found out that, I went to other states in the United States. There, I hit the jackpot. Because there are other counties in other states that have, that butt up to a metropolitan area like we do, with the Dallas-Fort Worth area, that have experienced some of the same growth, some of the same challenges that Rockwall County is addressing right now. So with that, we began to put things together in the concept of, what would it look like if we could imagine what our future's going to look like? What has defined Rockwall in the past, and how do we want to be defined in the future? This is going to take a lot of collaboration, and people who have heard me talk on this subject as well as others, it's about collaboration. We're the smallest county in Texas. We're 149 square miles, okay? But we have eight municipalities that reside in our Rockwall County. Now, if you're fact-checking me, I am counting, I am counting Rowlett, because we have a portion of Rowlett, we have a portion of Collin County, and we also have Mobile City. So then we have the communities such as McLendon-Chisholm and the other municipalities that we're aware of. So this plan is going to be about putting together a multi-year plan, a multi-year guide that Commissioners' Courts, and then future councils like you guys, we can all work together as we begin to define what is going to be a sustainable growth for our county, and how do we want that to be based on, and what do we want to look like in 2050? I know that kind of sounds like a long time, but really, it'll be here in a blink of a minute. So the next thing is, we wanted to see, well, what are the priorities that need to be included, or most likely will be included, in this strategic plan? And the handouts you guys have, which is where we're going to talk about, is these are, as I looked at, probably somewhere between sixty to seventy strategic plans from the other groups, counties that I told you about, there was just a common denominator of these items that kept coming up. So our topics, we decided, really need to look at, what is our regional and our community design? I heard you guys just talking about your comprehensive plan, and the county by no means is, wants to negate any of the comprehensive plans that the cities and the municipalities have done, and our school districts have done. And we have two school districts that are in part of this. So we want to make sure that from a regional and a community design, we are collaborating with each other, and we're all hearing and talking about what some, what some of the strategies need to be as we go into, as we go into 2050. the, the strategies need to be as we, as we go into, as we go into the twenty fifty. Land use... It won't, okay. Just because Barry walked in, you messed it all up. All right, I'm teasing. Nah, that's okay. I'll stand, I'll stand, how about if I stand back behind here, is that okay? All right. So our land use and open spaces, I heard you talking about open spaces a while ago. That needs to be included in, in the strategic plan, so that is something I know you're gonna sign up for after hearing you talk. Transportation and mobility. One of the, you know, the top things that people talk about is how do we get around? And, and the frustration we have, because when we don't, when we have that frustration, we don't have quality of life. And at the end of this, this, at the end of this, when we hopefully have a, a nice completed strategic plan, it's about maintaining the quality of life of Rockwall County that brought all of us here at some time. Obviously, the, being county, we do wanna make sure that the county services and the facilities are, are a part of this plan, of what that's going to look like to support the citizens of Rockwall County as a whole. It's a touchy subject, but environmental, fact, as far as the environmental factors and the sustainability, we need to make sure we've got what we need to get us through to, you know, to, to twenty fifty and beyond, and that includes water, it includes electricity, it includes all the type of, the, the environmental aspects that we need to make sure that we are bringing into the, into this picture. Public safety and healthcare, heard that happened a little, that was brought up a few minutes ago too, as far as public safety. We have to make sure that as we grow, that is a topic that is a top of mind also as this county grows. Economic development, we're gonna have that on your, on your, on your agenda in a few minutes, and economic development is what drives sustainable, healthy, smart counties, okay? And municipalities that embrace that. Education, nonprofits, our housing and our infrastructure. I'm not up here to tell the McLendon-Chisholm how you do, how you work with your housing and your infrastructure inside your, inside your city municipalities, but we wanna make sure that as we're putting a, a plan together, we're addressing that as a whole, for the whole county as well. But being respectful of each of the municipalities of how you do that. And then last but not least, which is very important to me, is historical preservation. I came here in nineteen sixty-one, everybody, so I've seen, I was here before the water was here, how about that? I keep turning best way, I'm sorry, I don't mean to, for you guys. What do we have, what we have done? So with this, with this background I've just given you, we have engaged a strategic planning company by the name of Baker Tilly, and we also are working with Freezin Nichols, who are being, who are also part of this, and I think you maybe have had Freezin Nichols out here as well. So this is gonna be a fifteen-month project, we started this past February, this is what I call the Dana Roadshow on behalf of the county. We hope to have this finished and completed with something, with, with the engagement and with the collaboration of our, of our citizens, because they are the greatest asset that is gonna be a part of this. So this will be next, um, April twenty twenty-five, we hope to make the presentation, and Commissioners Court will, will accept this, and then we will start the, the hard stuff, which is beginning to live it, and beginning to have the act, the actions. So what you guys have in your hands, get your phones out, take this home with you, because you can now have a copy. But these are the topics and the public workshops that will be starting at the middle part of next month, and we, we're trying to take a real collaborative, interactive process where we're going to have, these happening on Tuesdays and Thursdays, they will all be held at the Liberty Hall inside the, the Rockwall County courthouse off of Yellow Jacket. They'll be between five and seven. You will have an opportunity to come to any and all of these at those dates and those times, and give your feedback, your input, what you want, what you would like to see, because this is the information that's going to be collected from, from our consultant, and this is what will, will be the result, as I mentioned, in, in April of next year. With that, I am, I just wanna say thank you very much, because I think if we can focus on these topics, this is gonna ensure that Rockwall County's quality of life is going to be maintained, it's gonna be enhanced, and I think that the operations and the commitment of the Commissioners Court, and I think the future Commissioners Court and the future leaders and councils, just like you, we will be able to have an improved and county that we can all be really proud to live in. So with that, I thank you very much. Oh, questions? I like questions.
I don't have any questions, but it's been really good working with you, and I appreciate your, you're an inspiration, and thank you so much for doing what you're doing and your passion, and I can see it just even starting out last year, and seeing how far you've come along, and thank you for working out.
Well, thank you, Adrienne, and I, I apologize, I did want to make sure that I recognized on behalf of McLendon-Chisholm, when I spoke to Mayor Short, we, we asked for a couple of individuals that would be representing McLendon-Chisholm at that time, and so Adrienne and Asa over here are the two individuals representing. We also have some other individuals that are on some of these committees that you saw the topics, we have individuals from, from McLendon-Chisholm that have stepped up and are participating as a community for that too. So thank you.
All right, guys, we'll move on to seven point two, petition of landowner to release, to release, or for release of area from McLendon-Chisholm extrator, extraterritorial jurisdiction. Conrad?
Okay, thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. This petition was issued to the city of McLendon-Chisholm on March thirteenth. State law says without any action, they will be released from our ETJ in forty-five days, which will be April twenty-sixth, however, this, this property owner has been very interested in, in continuing as fast as he can with his, his C-store, gas station project that, that is on the five forty-eight, and, and the two oh five and five forty-eight going toward Fornies, right there in the corner there. So they have a petition, they wanna be released from our ETJ so they can immediately go. So they're looking for a vote, so as of April ninth, they can start moving. If the council chooses not to vote, or votes no, they'll wait till the twenty-sixth and do it anyway.
You're talking about the piece that's right there where five forty-eight turns south from two oh five, right?
Turns south on two oh five, correct.
Where they, they cleaned it all up, and it's just kinda sat dormant except for the weekend vendors from, for the last year or so?
They've cleaned it up, and there's sort of a triangle space where they've, they've designated for their, for their facility.
Okay, thank you. All right, guys, at this point in time, unless there's questions for Conrad on this or, or for Michael, I'll entertain a motion as to whether or not we wanna release them. Is that on this one?
If, if you wanna entertain a motion, I believe Conrad quoted, I believe it's forty-two point one oh five C or D, that if we take no action whatsoever, it, it's gonna go after forty-five days, so I think I'm not gonna repeat it here, because we've got a bunch of people, but y'all know my one rule with developers, so if y'all wanna help out developer and let him go early, that's policy decision.
All right, I'll entertain a motion, if there's no motion, then there'll be no action. Going one? Going twice? All right, no action on it. All right, we'll move on to seven point three, presentation, review and action, review and approval of continued process of the citywide architectural services heritage center. My contacts are giving me fits. Burdette Architects seeking motion to approve the final stages of the overall plan, development and process. Conrad?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council, we have, as you remember, the council approved this architectural firm to help us with our heritage center developments and overall plan of the area. We'd like to thank them for what they've done so far, they, they met with the council and staff for a kickoff meeting about two or three months ago, and they're coming back, as they said they would, at this time, to give you sort of a overview of what's happened to date, and their timeline of, of moving into the future. They wanna make sure that they're meeting what you initially had said that you want, so as they make this presentation, as you've read their documentation, as, as most of you have met with them individually, they're looking for feedback to say, yeah, you're right on the right track, maybe you look at this or that. So they're here with this presentation, and, and they, they actually high-fived to, to Burdette Architects, they came in on a limp leg, and they're, they hit a nail with one of their tires, hit something, and their tires were, and they're blowing up their tires out in the parking lot, so they, as, as you know, they, they come from the Houston area. Well, they're all over the state of Texas, so I think your principal office is, is there. But it's been a great, Stephwise, working with them up to now, and so I'll turn it over to them, and they have a presentation for you.
Okay. Well, now I'm gonna back up, so. You should always have a compressor and an extension cord in your, in your car, that's for sure, but we're good now. So I'm Charles Burdette, this is Mark Goulas, we have indeed come through the rainstorm and, and into fair skies and back to the clouds, I hope you guys got city clips yesterday, but we sure didn't. But we did spend about two hours of lost work with twenty people standing around waiting for it, so hopefully you didn't experience that. Tonight, we've got a presentation, this is, is an update, you know a lot about what's going on, and yes, we came before you last fall and, and presented our mindset about what we thought a heritage center feasibility study would entail, what a heritage center was indeed to you guys and to this community, and so we're gonna go through that, and set, in, in January, we met with a very large group, and we brought, I think about six of us up, and we sat right here in the council chambers, and we went through a programming session, early input with a, a number of stakeholders, and a couple of coun, or a couple of council members, Mayor, Conrad, and a few others, and, and we're excited to tell you a little bit about that. Do I need, can you advance that for me?
Yeah.
While we're waiting for that, I, I just wanna reiterate on what the Commissioner said, it's very exciting, quality of life was the comment that, that was spoken up, and I counted the words on here that are part of our presentation tonight, community, mobility, environmental, sustainability, land use, historical, education, healthcare, wellness, and community facilities, leisure activities, which is recreation. You're hitting all the nails on, on the head, and you also have that opportunity to have public engagement here. We've suggested that April the thirtieth, or thereabouts, as a, for a public meeting, town hall style meeting, and we will bring our entire staff to sit at tables, have discussions with different, with architects, landscape architects, planners, natural resource individuals, wildlife, scientists, soil science individuals, our firm is kind of a multidisciplinary firm that, that all sit at the table from the get-go to start on our feasibility study for this. So we're excited about that happening. I, I'll just tell you, and we'll kinda move on, 'cause I'm, I'm reading, everybody will look at me instead of that, and I'm, I'm not, I was hoping everybody would be looking at the screens, but the feasibility study purpose was to assist the city in visually demonstrating what, what a heritage-centered project was, and campus was gonna be all about. It's kind of a generic term, but we, we wanna know why, and we wanna know what, and so the first thing is to demonstrate this visually in a feasibility document that's pretty robust in the planning and looking at all options, not throwing anything off the table from the beginning. The facility, we can't think about a facility without thinking of a campus, because the eight acres, that's the subject property here, that eight acres is, it's, it's not your front door, but it's kinda your front door, because it is a form of your town center, because it's public property right here, and it's part of the backdrop, and it's a pretty impressive, eight acres is a lot of, of green space to work with. So we, we wanna showcase city's heritage, we wanna showcase the rural character, of course, and green space and the natural areas that are here, your topography is outstanding, and, you know, we came through the back way coming in because of the freeway, and there's a lot of low spots along the way, there's about eight ways to get to McLendon-Chisholm, and we, I think we've been five of them already, so we've seen a lot of low land, and you guys are definitely not there, but you have a lot of watershed that can be tri, I see you have an agenda item, there's a lot of trail connectivity opportunities through your master plan communities, and also through these waterways, where you can include those in your free, future trails or dedication perhaps. The other, we wanna promote history, wellness, education, and recreation. So the next slide shows just an understanding of what the facility, what it will do, what it is, why you want it, it's to be institutional uses for the city, perhaps for the county, could be for the school district, it could be for any number of user groups, it could be for rentals, for kincenaras, for family reunions, it goes on and on, a sense of gathering, a place in this community that gives you an identity, and not that there's not that opportunity as the community grows, but this is the perfect backdrop for that. We obviously wanna focus on the heritage and history, but also we wanna incorporate, or you want to incorporate, trails, parks, future green space, open space, and, and some bring some water into it, and we have adequate space back here in addition to a facility to bring those into the, bring that landscape and that sense of arrival as you pass through this, this corridor between fire station and the city halls. Also, to focus somewhat on arts and culture, the, the arts are important for any community as it grows, and whether that's music, or whether it's theater, or regardless of what it is, that's an opportunity, families certainly enjoy participating in that, I think you're gonna find that whatever this venue becomes, that that will be a backdrop for that as well, and you can enjoy it for, for everybody. Also, on the, the site that we have back here, we, we're looking at shade. The first time I came here was September of last year, and the cracks in the black land soil, of course, were about this wide, and it was about a hundred and eight that day, and we hope that we won't have a repeat in the next two years, but we know that we need to start planting trees now, because it takes a while here on this black land soil for the trees to establish, you have to select trees that are suitable to the site, and that they hopefully can survive that, but that's a start in the planting plan of that, we wanna make sure that that's included in the site development. And then also trail system, you talk, you, you are gonna talk about trails, we see this site as a connection to the land parcels that are surrounding it, the, the entire community has such opportunities to connect your master plan communities through trailheads that lead out of those subdivisions, or those communities, and, and lead on to, to connect the community overall. The next slide, feasibility study components. So this is, this is what is, if you, if you look at the upper pictures in this, you've got kind of a black drawing, black line drawing, that's kind of a massing and, and initial study, and then a little more vetted out and colored, a master plan on the left, and then an eventual facility, and this is speeding through the process that you'll go through here, but the components that we're studying are the architect, architectural space planning, you know, how many, how many rooms does the facility have, how many square feet for the lobby? We've heard about, we'd like to cook in it, we'd like to have meeting spaces, we'd like to have social gathering areas, maybe some recreation components, so we, we will include that in our master plan, also the materials, the inaccurate, you wanna pick up, the materials you have, this beautiful, beautiful city hall, the materials that are used in this are certainly, they're very, very pleasing to the eye, and they fit this region, the inaccurate fits where you are, and picking up on that language as you go into the, the park, and then on to the cul, the heritage center is important. So we wanna look at also sustainability goals, we wanna be water-conscious, we want to make sure that we're, we're planting good habitat for, for wildlife, for maybe bird and small mammals, that can all be done, it just takes time, but it takes a plan to get it in place, and then investment in that. Navigation, wayfinding, parking... Uh navigation, wayfinding, parking, unfortunately, that's the, the devil's in the details because whatever gathering space you have, you're gonna have parking. But we believe in distributed parking where people can walk a little bit, but it's not all like one big uh large parking area. And so most of our concept ideas show distributed parking throughout that area. Additionally, it, the site master plan will have circulation and, and suitability for what we hear from you and that's the, what we hear from you and the community is the program. That's what leads us in, in the aggregate to, to complete the master plan. We're gonna have community engagement, that will be in person, we'll also have eleven day survey and a town hall meeting. Um then the, the programming, the concept scenarios, um those will put to paper in visual terms, things like this on, on the screen there, but also there will be multiple ones and they won't be the final master plan. Those will all be coalesced into one or two final schematic plans and uh by the time you fund the project, those will be tested again later because funding won't happen the first, you know, once the program is delivered in June. Um also, very robust opinion of probable cost. If you don't know what the, the cost of these facilities and operations of them are gonna be, then that's hard to plan for that or plan bond elections or, or anything else. And then the final master plan. Uh I'm gonna skip this one slide and just kind of move on to what we've accomplished. Uh these kind of repeat some of these. I will tell you that we did, we've done a very robust uh site evaluation. Um last summer, of course, there's lots of wonderful uh, you know, sunflowers out there and, and uh grass and it was a lot drier then than it is now. Things are really greening up, but you have a kind of a sheet flow drainage that comes across that with black land soil. Um it all drains on the other side of the, uh fire station and we've talked to the city's engineer, the, the consulting engineer, and it was excavated to a level that will adequately handle any anticipated drainage according to the engineer. Um we'll, we'll see if that's, if that comes to be true because we have to test that. But the site is a, a blank slate and, and just a marvelous place for, uh to picture the, the future of people playing, gathering around water, uh all the wonderful things you can anticipate about this, but it's gonna shrink a lot the more you try to cram into it. And so we're trying very hard to consider a concept out there where you get all the program that you want, but that you're not overbuilding it. And any park or any campus, um you can spoil it by trying to make it too, too crowded and people need to still feel that, that room to spread their wings a little. Completed assignments thus far, we've done the initial site evaluation, we've had our kickoff meetings, we've done an initial program analysis and you've got that, uh that document, it's about nine pages of the input that we received. Um you also have a stakeholder engagement plan, which is uh it's about seven or eight pages of, of what we think is a good process and the groups that we need to reach. And uh basically, it's about transparency. It's about engaging the community uh in all the right ways as, as much as you can and being open and transparent. Uh we've also done the early engineering considerations. We're looking closely at site ingress and egress because we, we obviously, if you come in this entry here and you have a lot of activity back in the back on the eight acres, one entrance in and out, and any of you that have been to the ball, parks and select ball where you're loading and unloading between dames, you know, you can't just have one way in, you've gotta have multiple outlets. Um so we're looking into that. And uh we've also done a number of preliminary concept plans, however, they're just rough outlines at the moment, awaiting that public input, which we hope to get later in the month. Um the architectural programming that will eventually tell us what to do, we got goals and facts and concepts and needs and each of these are organized around function, foreign economy at time, in time. And that, all this together, the input is all categorized from comments that we receive from everyone and that kind of, that becomes the program that, that we eventually put into our modeling of the building and of the site campus. Um finally, the public engagement, these are just pictures of, of the type of engagement. It's important to get in front of kids, it's important to get in, in front of people in their homes if we, if we need to go see somebody, uh you know, stakeholders in, uh maybe a retirement community or in uh some facility where they can't come to the meeting, we'll do that and we just need to be very conscious of the groups. Uh they don't always, and, and I would tell you that sometimes you don't get the same people showing up at council chambers as you would get at a library or at a school or at an outdoor uh kind of a pop-up event. You had a huge crowd for your Easter celebration, that would've been a perfect time, we should've, we should've thought of that. But uh a pop-up event is a great way to catch people when they're not quite, you know, on edge, uh and ju, just enjoying it and the children are there and they just look at some concepts and, and tell you what they think. And so we'll, we'll think about what you have coming up this spring and uh go from there. So I'm gonna turn it over to Mark. I, I apologize for the lengthiness and that I spoke a lot longer than Commissioner and uh, but Mark is gonna take you through space planning and just wrap up on the architecture side.
Yeah, I mean, basically what Charles says, we'll, once we have all the meetings, we'll be able to gather information uh from everybody and try to understand what those words mean as far as creating space and, and square footage and, and the size of the buildings that might be on, on the development. So we'll look at not only the building itself, but also look at the site and how that building would fit on the site and how we have access to everything else that makes it work. So those are part of the things that kind of come down after we start having all our meetings and try to translate it into needs and, and uh requirements for the facility that we're gonna have. This is just sort of a example of how we use a matrix to create the square footages after our communication with everybody and so we can break down every bit of space, you got corridors, you have uh libraries, you have whatever we come up with and we analyze that to a matrix to create what we would like to have and what we think we want to have and try to merge them both together into a final com, uh project. These are just some images of some other uh feasibility studies. This is actually a project at Conroe, uh near our, our main office. Um but we'll have some studies showing in our feasibility study, we'll have some images of interiors, exterior, showing different things that could be in the space that kind of gives you an idea so when you go out there and try to raise the money or do the funding, however you're gonna happen, there's some imagery that helps tell the story. Um here's just some of the concepts that we can think of, you know, you sort of a city center type concept, park areas with benches, play areas for kids, you know, soccer, uh what's that thing, pickleball? I think that's, isn't that popular though? Stuff like that is just real, real, a lot of things we'll take into consideration when we're doing the land planning and, and some communications from the, the citizens and also everybody else involved in the process to get a good idea of what we can come up with. Here's just some other studies that we've done before. Some, one to the left is sort of a parkscape with showing shade structures and, and tennis courts and um pavilions and stuff like that we'd like to incorporate. And then the other one on the right is more of a high den, more of a dense, high dense, higher density uh city center where you have street scapes with uh different elements that tie it all together through park, green space, hardscape and everything else. And we'll be studying all that stuff from ideas that y'all give us and try to incorporate it into a grand master plan. And then, other than that, any questions?
Yeah, we're having, are there any questions we have or, or comments? I know that was a fast, fast hat.
Just, just a quick question, when you were, were going over your assumptions on the retention basin earlier uh over here and we've talked about it a little bit, but infiltration versus runoff, when you put in these parking lots, you're getting a lot more runoff than we're gonna currently get. Was that taken into their consideration or do we need to be prepared to address that as well?
We asked that question about three times.
Right.
Uh, um we talked to Doug, who, who's a city engineer and um he assured us, um I questioned, like I said, and the third time he said, "I did it." And so he said, "I know that it's sized for any anticipated growth out there." Now, and I said, I did mention impervious surface, you're talking about rooftops, parking, you know, and we could do impervious surface, impervious paving and some of that, but uh you know, we, we'll double check on that because the, the concept plans, that, they will go into the study, but they're not the, the construction drawings or the, the actual project.
But I, and Doug said he's gonna get us existing drawings so we can actually look at the volume it has now. Other than that, we can at least analyze some of the concepts we're coming up with to make sure we have the volume that will work. We'll talk to our several engineers to make sure that, that it makes sense for what we're designing.
Well, thank you for your presentation and everything that you've been working with us on and meeting with us and taking the time to come all the way from Houston. Um you've done a great job. Um and I just wanna confirm something with the timeframe that you're suggesting is April thirtieth, the day that, you know, what are we gonna expect on that day? Is it gonna be like a open house where you're gonna have tables set up, uh some kind of pictures for people to pick at? I mean, what, what are you thinking?
Well, what, what we're thinking at the moment is, is tables, um it's great to sit across the table from your neighbor, from your community members and uh to have plottings on the table of the side back here and have people draw on them and to, to tell us where they, where they play now, to have a map of the ETJ and the city and people can say, "I live here and, you know, we, we go here for, for select ball and we go there for uh school, et cetera." And the, learning about that and, and we'll have somebody at each table from our office that's familiar with the project and that uh can speak intelligently about, you know, the topics that are coming. As far as um the date, that's, we're, we're open to a number of dates, but we know that with uh, with an election coming up and uh the things that you have on your plate, we're at your disposal and we know that we don't, we, you need enough advance notice to get it uh out on your, either on your, your billings or online or Facebook or, or what have you and some of your businesses along here to get you a uh maybe something to put in storefronts so you can advertise it that way and also here at city hall. But we, we'll work that out with, with the staff and, and let them check with you on dates.
But yeah, in these present, oh, sorry.
Okay. And then as far as the, and can you talk about what the online survey, what does that look like? Is it gonna be like a QR code, a quick link? Is it gonna be on our website or is there gonna be a special website that you're gonna curate?
I didn't bring that guy with me, but, but it'd be, we will, there's a lot of different ways we could do it depending on what, you know, what you guys have. But yes, QR code is very simple to do and uh we, we make sure though that the way the questions are worded, that there's something that we can stratify rather than make it something, you know, and we also at public meeting, we're gonna have cards that say, write down what you really wanna tell us because oftentimes surveys don't satisfy people's desire to tell you more, alright? But that's how those surveys have to be, otherwise you won't. One time we did a project for the Woodland Estates where they, they were building a rowing facility for stall rowing on this beautiful lake and we started getting all these people sending in that they really wanted a rowing facility, but do you row? No, we don't row, you know? And so we know that people don't tell the truth all the time on the surveys and we wanna make sure that we, we make it, uh list of the, if, if we say, "Would you like a uh, you know, indoor swimming?", uh everybody will say yes. So we wanna find out questions that, that are a little easier for us.
Um I have a question on the April thirtieth date. That is still, where, where would you use the facilities to do that? Would it need to be in here?
That, that's a big, you know?
Because we would probably have to, if you're gonna do it, we'd probably have to do it with the fire department. I believe we'd have ballots here and I don't know if that'd be early voting, that'd be uh, we'd have to make sure we'd have a secured area, so I'd probably say the fire department if there would be open to letting us use the facility. Will the, no, I believe the last day is the thirtieth, am I right? That I say is the thirtieth and then, I don't, I don't know if they, do they take the equipment? I don't know this part, do they take it with them until the actual voting on the fourth or does it stay here? Yeah, so then maybe between the, between that and the fourth maybe of May, but if not, then I would say after the election might be the safest bet all the way around.
We could do it on the twenty-third, which is the week before, it's two weeks from now and that's probably.
The third is still, so twenty-second through the thirtieth, I believe is our voting. So it either.
We'll do it, uh we work with you and you tell us what are good dates. Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, I think these are just tentative ballpark and then we'll work with Burdett and Associates and, and get the best date, we'll work with the council, um and, and we'll select the date after the election.
With, with the online survey, that would interfere with anything if that was going out, but we usually would keep that open about thirty days.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Any more?
Thank you very much.
I'll, let us vote real quick and then we'll, we'll do that. All right, if there's no other questions for them, thank you so much for the presentation, guys, you did a great job. All right, I'll entertain a motion to move forward with what they're doing.
A motion to approve uh the process of citywide architectural services heritage center, Burdett Architects, the final stages of the overall plan development and process.
Yeah, I've got a motion to have a second.
Aye.
Show that unanimous. Um guys, we got guys that need to take a restroom break, so we're gonna take about ten minutes.
Okay. At 7:50, we're bringing back the meeting back into order after break. Mayor Short is not feeling well, and so he decided to go ahead and leave, and we wish him his, to feel better and get a good night's sleep. Okay, next up, we're going to have discussion and action on, I'm sorry, 7.4, discuss and consider granting a utility easement and right-of-way request from RCH generally located in the clinches and city limits in King Latham Survey abstract 133, Rockwall County, Texas. Can we go ahead and have a staff report, please, Conrad?
Okay, thank you, Mayor Proton, members of the council. This is a utility easement request from RCH Water and as it relates to the widening of SH 205, as you know that that's been going on for, and Councilmember Tucker goes to all those meetings for the roads and streets. It's been going on for a long time. They've been, they're getting closer and closer to getting to the point of actual construction. I think it's end of this year, possibly first part of 25. This is a project, a requested easement for a construction, a temporary construction easement, then a permanent easement, but also at the end it states a, an easement for when the road widens to six lanes, which is proposed. I don't think there's a timeline yet, but it's going to be widened to a two-lane or four-lane divided at this juncture. And this is what the main body of the easement's for, but it also requests that when they move to a six lane that it gets, they don't have to come back and say, mother may I, you've already granted that easement for that extension. So that's what you have before you. It's something that, in staff's opinion, is it has to happen. I mean, everybody's waiting to get 205 to happen. It's a small section. It, Councilmember Day asked specifically where it was. It's that section, about a 30-foot section in front of where the old fire facility is, where the flashing line on 205, where the city owns property there. That's where it's located. And as I said, it's something that is imperative for the overall accounting, for everybody to have this easement granted. However, there is an issue of, we requested a franchise agreement and whether you want to mix things together, that's up to you. I just wanted to bring it up to your attention. We requested RCH for a franchise agreement as well as the other local water providers, as well as all the utilities in the area that we hold franchise agreements with. And they have taken that. The council passed an ordinance, which is law, and they decided not to move it forward. They did send it back with a variety of changes and wanted us to change and nothing's happened since. We, they noted that the black lines, we had some changes. The black line changes were the interest rate, which is the exact same interest rates that's in the RCH agreement. It's also on what it was, whether they were going to pay us quarterly or monthly were the discussion items. It had no direct input into the actual ordinance that was before then. So this is apples and oranges. I admit, I'm telling you straight up, it's apples and oranges. The request is for an easement request, not for try to get the franchise agreement passed to negotiate that. But just so you know, because things are going on, that that's something that we consider very important here in our city, I know. We checked with all our local, our pick six, which is really pick eight cities, all the local cities around us from Rallett to Rockwall to Fate to Roy City to Terrell and Forney and Heath. They all charge utility franchise agreements. Most of them don't charge water franchise agreements because the city itself provides the water, provides the agreement, so they don't have a franchise agreement. So I just want to bring it up, so that's it. And back to where I am. This is an agreement that should be a 30-second approval, in my opinion, because it has to happen. I mean, we want that, everybody wants that. We've been working for years and years to get the widening of 205, and so this is a request on a small section of city property. But it doesn't have to be, and that's what I wanted to bring up. They, you could request that they come back when it goes to six lanes. That's kind of immaterial as well. I believe that we can take care of the easements all at once. So that's what, that's what you have in front of you for approval.
Couple of things. Dan, can you answer something for me since you're on roads? Because I don't know this part on the four lanes. Conrad, can you knock yours down? Thank you.
When they were doing the design for the four lanes, were they already going to allocate for six lanes and then it just, so it's already going to be built, right? It's just going to merge it. So they wouldn't have to come back because they would already, we're already, it's already going to be addressed, Conrad, I believe, from what I understand. I could be wrong. That's why I wanted to double check with Dan. The other thing, I definitely, you know, I agree with you, Conrad, but stay focused on what the item is. The franchise fee, I don't know why that was even brought up because it's not a part of that agenda item, but I understand, yeah, just staying focused on exactly what we're voting on, please. But yeah, the roads, it would already have the six lane, right?
Okay.
Would any other council member would like to speak on the subject or ask questions of the staff?
No, I mean, this is something that needs to be done and certainly there needs to be a separation between the franchise fee associated with it and the easement is itself a, something that needs to be looked at and approved in my mind. And so I think we should push forward with it. As far as the franchise fee, we're going to be looking at that in the future, I assume?
Aye.
Yeah? Okay, well, we'll be on the agenda in the future.
Well, we'll entertain a motion for 7.4.
I'll make a motion to go ahead and grant a utility easement and right-of-way request from RCH.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Moving on to 7.5, discuss and consider an ordinance amending the code ordinances to update the cities for junk vehicle sections to comply with state law amendments. Mr. Asa Woodbury, can you give a staff report?
Actually, that's me, if I can jump in for Asa. Or we could leave it to Asa. Through our code enforcement, we found out that state law has changed as it relates to junk vehicles and the definition, and you've seen it in your packet. All we're doing is a housekeeping thing and taking state law that's changed and incorporating it into our municipal law.
Can we get an update on what was changed? Can we get an update on what was changed?
Um, yeah, I believe that's in your, not positive if it's in your packet, but, yeah, it's, it's, um, page fifty-one of one eighty-two, there's a red line and markup, if you check that, and then the change two is right behind it on page one fifty-two and fifty-three. It's ve- it's, it's pretty simplistic, um, the changes, but it, they are changes from state law to, that we're trying to incorporate into ours.
All right, I'll entertain a motion for, I'll entertain a motion for, uh, seven point five.
I would like to move that we approve an ordinance amending the code of ordinances to update the cities for junk vehicle sections to comply with state law amendments.
Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all unanimously passed. Moving on to seven point six, discuss and consider minor amendment for Horizon Lakes to change the number of lots from one thousand seven hundred and eighty-six to one thousand seven hundred and seventy-six. And Conrad, we have staff report, please? Oh, y'all are playing on me now, Mr. Asa Woodbury.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem, members of the council, uh, so, just a bit of background, so Horizon Lakes is formerly Trilogy PD Plan Development, so they've requested an administrative approval to replat portions of their development, uh, the total number of lots for the development has been reduced from seventeen eighty-six to seventeen seventy-six. This request means a definition of a minor mine, of a minimum, a minor amendment as defined in section ten point oh two, point oh oh five, section six of the City of McLendon Chisum Subdivision Regulations. The proposed changes meet one or more of these standards listed in this section. This development is in our city limits, and lot sizes remain the same, building setbacks remain the same, and all other building criteria and standards remain unchanged, and I do believe that there are representatives in the audience, uh, that'd be happy to take any questions.
Wonderful, okay, so we're gonna have Mr. Atkins, will you please come up to the podium?
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem and council. Uh, yes, as, uh, Asa said there, we're just requesting that the preliminary plat be amended, uh, with the amended preliminary plat that you have before you, which reduces the number of lots by ten, um, it changes a little bit of the road configuration, it really, um, as we've gotten into the design, um, allows a better use of the topography of the property, and saves some areas of trees and those sorts of things, so, uh, we feel it's a better overall design for the, for the product, and, um, it's less lots for the city, so.
And do we have any questions from council?
No, I'm watching the, uh, the project as it develops so far on the five fifty, and I drive it down there virtually every day, and I appreciate you saving some trees along that, that beautiful, uh, that beautiful lane, so, thanks.
Yes, sir, the intent is try to save as many trees as possible.
Do, do these adjustments to the, uh, to the street plan, which I'm looking at right now, that you're having here, have a major impact on the drainage considerations for the site?
It, it actually does, and it actually helps, uh, along the north, on, on the north section, um, part of what you see there allows, uh, some drainage to remain in a open channel, uh, and kinda keep it natural, and split that road around it, so that it is, uh, becomes an amenity to the, to the property rather than just wiping it out with a roof.
Any other comments from council? I hear none, and we're gonna go ahead and, uh, entertain a motion.
Oh, Mayor Pro Tem, we can't entertain a motion on that, yeah.
We can't?
Nope, we talked about this before, with a minor, with a minor amendment, I believe it's under ten point oh five, oh oh five, um, at six, I think, of our code of ordinances, and it says the mayor and city administrator, so that would be Conrad and the mayor, may jointly approve a minor amendment. The ordinance does not give the city council, the PMZ, or anybody authority or approval by saying the mayor and city administrator, and exclu- it automatically, by the way it's written, excludes everybody else. So, in fact, the whole point of a minor amendment is not to do this, that's the whole reason you have a minor amendment, that's why it's defined as a minor amendment, so you don't have to do this, you can go to the mayor and the city administrator, and if it complies with its layout, there's about three or four requirements that we have, if it's laid out, like, we all know the one, and everybody's gonna laugh, or roll their eyes, or, oh gosh, you know that, about the density, it doesn't change that. All of those, Councilmember Day's not, so he gets it, that's one of the four, if all those are met, then the mayor and the city administrator may jointly together, so it can't be one, and not the other, one, other one is noncommittal, unless they both say yes, it can't be done, and they have to go through the whole, uh, process of amendment. Now, tomorrow, the mayor and the city administrator can get together and approve this if they want to, but right now, our ordinances don't allow the council or anyone else, except for the mayor and the city administrator, to make that decision.
Um, Mayor Pro Tem, members of council, our esteemed attorney is a hundred percent correct, it's, it's ninety-nine point nine, no, I must have thought, um, the mayor recently requested that a minor amendment be brought to get your feedback, and, and to hear your discussion and stuff like that, on another project, to, in fairness and other reasons that the mayor has, he wanted to do the exact same thing with this one, so, it's correct a hundred percent what he just told you, so, go on that, but some of, just the backup of why, he wanted to hear your feedback, he wanted to hear your thoughts, and then he'll take that action.
Well, just for future references, and this is, maybe it's just me, but can we make sure to include that in the report, so that we don't make the mistake of referring it to as a discussion in action item? Okay, thank you, sir, okay. Um, any other feedback from council, council on this subject? I hear none, and we'll go ahead and, you know, you'll, you'll hear about it tomorrow. Okay, so moving on to, um, thank you, Matt, Mr. Atkins, we're moving on to seven point seven, consider an action of the site plan and landscape plan to propose retail center presented by Mr. Brian Barry. Um, oh, did he just, okay, sorry, would you like to come up to the mic, or the podium real quick, and then I'm gonna have Asa lead in, okay? Are you all, okay, thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem, members of the council, uh, this request, um, is the approval of a site plan for the development of three commercial lots, lot two R constitutes one point two six nine two acres, lot three R one constitutes one point two two three nine acres, and lot three R two constitutes one point three five six five acres of land, the total acres for the project is three point eight five acres. The development will be, will be built in phases, with phase one only including lot three R one, th- this application is administratively complete and in conformity with the recommendations of the McLendon Chisum Comprehensive Plan. The planning and zoning commission recommended approval of the site plan for three R one, three R two, and two R, with conditions as set forth in the staff report. The staff report, we as staff are recommending approval subject to the following conditions for lot three R one, which would be just submission of an irrigation plan to city staff for review and approval prior to any project construction, and that concludes my staff report, and I will turn it over to Mr. Brian Barry.
Thank you, Asa, uh, madam, Mayor Pro Tem, council, thanks for having us here. Brian Barry, One Firm, forty-two ten Ridge Road, Heath, Texas, um, I learned about needing to be here about thirty minutes ago, so, uh, I'm here to help however I can, um, but I think it's pretty straightforward, uh, question.
Uh, well, you missed, um, a lot of citizen comments, and some of the things, um, that was brought up was regarding some, um, screening, AKA walls, bushes, what, you know, has, have you had the time to kinda reach out to the HOA, any of the residents that are in Chisum Crossing, I just wanted, they're in the audience that did make, um, that a point, and we wanna make sure that we're listening and asking questions, as you start.
Yeah, um, early on, whenever, uh, we were preparing the, uh, the site plan, I had talked with gentlemen here in the audience, that I believe is the president of their HOA, and, and had talked specifically about, uh, our desires of having some turn-ins off of, of, of that, of their road, uh, and as we all know, that's a private road, and, uh, had gotten feedback that that was not something that they were interested in, which is why we ultimately changed the site plan the way we did. Um, during those, uh, conversations, uh, we had just elevated conversations, high-level conversations of expressing our desire to be, uh, meaningful and accommodating to, you know, relatively reasonable requests of the type of look and what I was really asking for, attempting to ask for, um, was whether it was their desire to not see the development in totality, or if, uh, the desire was to have it more open and just, you know, um, putting landscape, uh, borders along the edge, and, and my interpretation has been that, uh, the latter of the two, and, and that's our intent. Um, we do have a desire to seek feedback and look forward to hearing from those comments. I will tell you that we would not be putting a wall there, um, uh, but we do have a desire to have, uh, you know, trees and bushes as such, um, as reflected on our landscape plan.
So, are you willing to, when you say entertain, um, comments and, and, and feedback from the residents, I'm assuming, uh, will you be able to address the, um, the roadway specifically, because their concern is that the in- the entrance to, um, you know, the entrance from the roadway may involve, like, parking on their road of Cattle Baron?
I don't know that I fully understand what you're asking, I mean, there's obviously an easement.
They don't want to have cars parked inside their, um, inside their neighborhood, so they're, they're concerned that it's gonna take up space, did I get that correct, Mr. Tucker?
Well, yeah, I happen to live in the, uh, community here, and there's sort of valid concern about parking over there, there's concerns obviously about, about noise, there's concerns about, uh, lighting, so there's a, there's a number of concerns, I'm not convinced that you've spoken to, uh, you may have spoken to, on an individual basis, one person, but you haven't spoken to the community, at least I haven't heard of it, so I would recommend, uh, an HOA meeting where you may provide a presentation, and get some valid put, uh, input from the residents.
And I appreciate that, and we're certainly amendable to taking that under advisement and, and considering that, uh, we're certainly not producing anything that's, that's outside of, um, um, the covenants of, of the zoning that exist, and, um, as it relates to, um, as it relates to parking, I wanna attempt to address everything, it's, it's not our street, um, and if anybody ever parks on it, it's, you know, that's, they're subject to their own, we, um, we don't have any ingress or egress onto that street, it's a private road, um, and, uh, certainly would do whatever we could to prevent any of that, I'm not sure what authority we have, um, if, if signage was something that was requested for us to, uh, to, to have two or three signs along there to put there, I'd be happy to entertain that, if, if that's something that they would like to do. Um, as it relates to landscape along Cattle Baron there, um, you know, our property is not, uh, up to their, to the, to the curb of their road, so there is a, uh, there is a, there's, there's a, there's a barrier, I'm gonna, I'm gonna say for round numbers, ten or twelve feet gap between our property line and theirs, that, and so, there's gonna be a natural setback of our landscape barrier that, that, that abuts to that.
Is there any other comment?
Yeah, the, I have several comments, actually, I, I, I'm concerned about some of the, some of the things that are happening here, including the impacts to the topography and the floodplain and things like this, but, uh, to, just, I'm backing up to the PNZ meeting that happened, what, two weeks ago, on this, very question, I actually watched that, and my understanding is on that agenda, that public agenda, before they could issue that recommendation, there was one of these lots, not three, and they approved three, but it wasn't on the agenda to do so. Can you give me some feedback on what happened there?
So, at the PN, okay, so at the PNZ meeting, so this is a site plan and a development plan for these three lots, so this is a development plan for the entire development, they're going to do plating for each of these three, so like, two, for, three R one will have a plat, a preliminary plat for that, that's, so it'll be, that'll come back in three different plaits. This is a, this is the site plan for two R, two R one, three R one, so that's what that was, so, they'll have three different plaits, but this is a site plan for the overall development.
So, the way that I'm reading this, and I was looking at the to- the topographical plat on this issue, it looks like the drainage is gonna go out to the, uh, let's see there, I don't have an, I don't have a North Arrow unfortunately on this, but, uh, to the intersection of Cattle Baron and McLendon Road FM five fifty, uh, it's gonna hit into a drainage, this entire area is gonna be draining, potentially four to in, you know, in a heavy storm, three inches into an impermeable surface, it's all gonna focus straight down to that corner. I've seen the pipe that that goes through, it's a little culvert, it's probably twelve inch, maybe, maybe a little larger. Um, I have a lot of concerns about the traffic aspect of this, anybody who's, who sees us, it's all going in and out of five fifty, people are making left-hand turns to try to, I mean, I'm not anti-business, I mean, that, that's not what the problem is here, it's, I have a lot of concerns about the safety and, and about how well thought out this plan is, and, you know, I understand, you know, you're, you're, you're doing your thing here, but I think this requires more public input, comment, and working over, and, and I do recommend, um, you going back and reviewing the public comments, this will be available on YouTube for, as review, to hear what they're saying, a lot of these folks are from the Cattle Baron area, so these will be your neighbors, and, and hearing what they have to say, and I, I wanna be responsive to that, and what they're asking for is an opportunity to have a conversation with you about this.
I appreciate that, Councilmember Day, and, and, and I'd like to address a few things in no particular order, first of all, um, as it relates to traffic, uh, obviously this is a tech stock controlled road, and we've, we've received all our permits and access for same, in accordance with, with the regional manager in those regards, and, uh, uh, the specifics of those, without getting too far into the weeds, is, that's kinda the purpose of only having the ride-in and ride-out, and two of them, and only a, a full-service ingress into the middle. Um, I, I appreciate the comments on, on talking with the neighbors, and we, we desire to do that, um, it's, it's obviously not something that's contingent upon these, 'cause it's, this isn't a zoning request, and it's not a PD request, um, um, the, the quality of projects that, I think that if you look that we do around here, we're, we're not known for, for taking the cheap route, if you will, and so, uh, it's, it's not as much of just a cost when I say things like, we're not putting a wall there, we don't, we don't like the, the lack of invitation to, to this, and, uh, we fully respect the fact that that's a private road next to us, and as such, I, I visualize us having landscape barriers that, that dictates same, um, as it relates to the specifics of the plant types, I, I don't know that, and, and, and do desire to, to, to hear feedback and ask them for, for input of same. Um, there was one other, oh, as it relates to flow, uh, and, and I'm gonna tie that to kinda the site plan versus the, the plating side of this, naturally, as you know as well as anyone, uh, engineering is, is, is all part of the preliminary and final plat process, and, um, our civil engineering team, Mr. Jerry Monk, is working with Doug for Freight, city engineering, uh, firm here, um, and actually communicated with them today, uh, don't have anything here material to, to discuss, 'cause we're not at that point yet, but, um, we've gotten tech stock approval to utilize the drainage through their right-of-way, as well in conjunction with tying it into the city infrastructure, so, I just wanted to let the record reflect that all that stuff's being taken into account, and the engineers on both, uh, the city side, as well as our team, are working, uh, in conjunction with one another, and those, uh, items will certainly be addressed at a preliminary plat, uh, in advance of the final plat for same.
When, when tech stock does these, uh, studies, do they already take into account the, the safety concern that Councilmember Day has, so when they're doing their studies, they, I'm assuming they understand where the turn-ins and turn-outs are, is that the, and I'm, 'cause I don't know this, so I just wanna know, is that something they consider when they're doing that, 'cause I do understand Councilmember Day's, uh, concern on the safety?
Yeah, and I appreciate that, the, uh, The, you'll never hear me, having sat on your side of the bench as well, put words or attempt to put words in Tech Dot's mouth, but the best I think that some would say is, is, is that is the whole purpose of the process of getting their access easements off of their roadway. I think they're called roadway permit access, I believe. And that's ultimately what we just went through, pretty extreme deliberations over, that ultimated, and what I was referring to is, out of the three entrances, only two of them being limited, and only one of them having full access for same, is, is taking into account the safety components. And without getting too far off the, off the, off the trail here, I would tell you that as we talked early on in the highest level of, of initial presentation we had here, expressing concern about the adjoining site plan, it was our extreme concern about safety of having too much dual-traffic way going through there. And I think that that very much led to the, the decision of forcing that to be a, a, a write-out only from, from our development there, so.
Any other comments?
Yes. And then also, and this might be something Asa can answer, because I also want to ask on the concern, so the, the site plan, can you explain that part to me again, why three R one, two R, and three R two were separate? Because I just want to make sure, are we, we're voting on the actual, just the site plan, or being considered to make a, a move to do so? Can you explain that just a little bit better for me? Because I want to make sure we understand what we're making.
Yeah, so this is a site plan for the entire thing, for the entire three lots. But this is just for phase one. So lot three R one is just phase one. So you'll have, this is a site plan for the entire development, and then you'll have three plaits coming out. So you'll have the three plaits from three R one, two R, and so those will be three separate plaits. So you're just voting on the overall site plan today, not a plat, not anything, just the plan.
Right. So with that being said like that, then it seems like if we're just voting on the sites, the plaits, we don't know exactly how those will be designed, what they're going to look like and everything. This is just the overall to allow this to get started, and this was recommended by P and Z?
Correct. Yes.
Any other comments from council? As I say none, I will entertain a motion for seven point seven. Thank you, Mr. Berry.
I would like to move to consider approval for the site plan and landscape plan to the proposed retail center presented by Brian Berry.
I heard a motion for approval of the site plan and landscape plan to propose retail center presented by Brian Berry. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
It's going to be a yay, ne, yay, ay. Aye. Aye. I do ask that, Mr. Berry, as it is overall, please make a point to work with the homeowners on their concerns, and to make sure that we're making sure they're, they're hearing, that you're getting feedback from them, okay? Thank you, sir.
Yeah, and I want to echo on that. I actually agree. I think, being that this is a site plan, it allows the, Mr. Berry to reach out to them and hopefully come to a, a mutual agreement, because, and that's what my, why I wanted to dive into that separation, because I, I do believe that they can come to an agreement, but the site plan approval was, it was already recommended by P and Z, and it seemed like we need to go through it.
Moving. Okay. Um, we need to move into executive session for, where is it? I think we'll be on, sorry, I apologize. Moving to executive session for seven point eight, and then I'm going to read off the city council, for the city of McLennan, just on Texas reserves, right to convene in the executive session at any time during the course of this meeting to discuss any, any of the matters listed as authorized by Texas government code chapter 551, including but not limited to 551 dot nine six one, consultation with attorney, 551 dot zero seven two, real property, 551 dot zero seven three, affected gifts, 551 dot, 551 dot zero seven four, personnel matters, 551 dot zero seven six, security devices, 551 dot zero eight six, utility competitive matters, and 551 dot zero eight seven, economic development negotiation. It is eight twenty-four. Do you want me to add any ones?
No.
Okay. Any other items? Let's see.
I don't know if we are.
Yeah, seven point eight. Yeah, that's it. Okay, thank you, sir. Seven, eight twenty-five.
Do you see him?
Okay, eight forty-six, we're coming back from executive session, no action was taken. Back on to seven point eight, discuss and consider options for road repairs, including the possible implementation of a public improvement district inside the city limits in an area commonly known as the Glen Acres subdivision four and including but not limited to parts of Glen Acres Drive, Briar Glen and Meadow Drive. I'm going to have first our staff, if you'd like to start off and open up a little bit about, some things about this discussion item.
Thank you Mayor Proten, members of the council. So for this discussion item, this is, so it's discussing consider options for road repairs, including the possible implementation of a public improvement district inside the city limits in an area commonly known as Glen Acres subdivision four and including but not limited to parts of Glen Acres Drive, Briar Glen and Meadow Drive. So this here, so this would be all paperwork. If the HOA would like to do this and create a PID, a public improvement district, that would be paperwork that they would need to do and bring that into the city. So that is on them and so we as the city, when they turn that in, we would review that for a technical basis to make sure that everything is administratively complete. So this particular item doesn't relate to us, so we don't, we would not go out and create this or put in an application for the HOA. They would do that and then come to us and submit things to us for us to review internally.
I would like to go ahead and speak real quick.
Yeah, yes.
Prior to, can you turn your mic off?
Yes.
So the whole purpose of seven point eight tonight is merely a discussion. It is to help give guidance from a city point of view, whether it's directing the staff, if it's advising them to submit the paperwork. There's no action being taken tonight, I want to stress that. This is simply to discuss, to help a community that's within our city that has reached out to us numerous times, which was discussed, you know, back from twenty eighteen, twenty twenty-three, whatever the dates were at this point, that's review mayor stuff. So the whole purpose again is to discuss, to try to help a part of our community have some answers. Whether it is a PIT, whether it is the city buying the road, whatever it may be, they would have to understand, yes, that they have to initiate that. They would understand that they would have to get their committees together, however they want to do it within their HOA or within their neighborhood. And that's what this was about tonight, to be able to give them that discussion, give them that heads up. So I understand where you're coming from. Totally don't know why that even came out, to be honest, because the whole purpose was to discuss it. And it just seemed like what you came out with was just like, they gotta do this. Well, that's not what we're here, hold on, please, that's not what we're here to do. We're here to just discuss this so that we can, I mean, when someone comes and asks for help, that's what we should be listening to. And when there's an ambulance that can't get a reading until they get to two oh five, we should all be concerned. I would hate to think that we never even tried to attempt to help a community that needed help. Now, we don't know that end course, right? There's, we can't predict that, there's no crystal ball, there's no magic eight ball that gives us that answer. But if we can at least give them guidance to give them a way to go, then, you know, maybe that is saying, hey, you get your three representatives from Glen Acres and we're going to set up a meeting with Glen Acres representatives, Conrad, Asa, whoever it is, right? Then they come and sit down and then we can coach them or, you know, I don't want to say advise, because I believe that's not the word we were told to use from our city attorney, but, you know, sometimes people need help. You know, these forms, they, you feel them out. And again, it's just, it's just helping, it's really what this discussion comes down to. Doesn't mean that we provide them the answer, but we help them understand that to get to the answer they're at least seeking. Am I making sense? I don't know, so maybe I'm talking in circles to myself because I do have a habit of rambling and I apologize.
Yes, our council members, so let me just apologize because I guess that wasn't my intention of how it came out. So me as the city planner, I am the staff, so it would be me that would be helping them. So, and that's what I'm going to do, that's my job, is to help the citizens and to best represent the citizens with land use matters, that's my job. So I just want to make it clear that I'm always here to help with any questions. So I don't mind meeting with the HOA president or the representatives to kind of talk them through the process or anything. So I just want to make it clear that that's always my intention to help. And I didn't, it became off a different way, I apologize.
I just, these red buttons, and I too apologize, I wasn't trying to attack. My, my thing is, is I just feel like whether it is the PIT that ends up being at the end of the day, you know, everything has to, will eventually come back to a vote, whether it's a, because even they have to petition. They would have to vote, they would have to get things, then it would have to come back to here. But right now, you know, like Mr. Milner said, they came in July of twenty-three. I can tell you, I never saw a video and I know they submitted a video. I've asked a couple of other council members and they didn't see the video. So, I mean, that's just concerning to me, like, we should have saw the video. I mean, maybe we could have helped them in twenty-three get to a better answer. So what, what's happened is, we're sitting here in April, we've lost months that maybe we could have gave them some advice. I mean, then now they're at desperate wits' ends. I mean, I'm not saying that the city is the, at the end of the day, the end all be all answer for them, but man, we should be at least figuring out a way to help them. And if it means guiding them on some certain ways to help them on their end, sure, let's do it. If it means they submit a PIT and it passes with them and it passes with us, great. But to do nothing since July of twenty-three, which is what we've done in essence, and I know we can sit here and say, oh, we advised them to go get an attorney, we advised them to do that, that's not giving them that, that's not helping them. And I, I think we could do more, or at least we should.
Is there any other council members with any other comments?
Just over, just some historical perspective on this. What is the main cause of the impacts over on, specifically on Briar Glen? Is it construction traffic, is it just people driving through, commercial?
The roads haven't really been maintained, it, you know, they, I don't think that we really have all of the engineering issues and all that. But at the end of the day, I've seen the road, I've driven on the roads in the past. I didn't need to see a video, I experienced it and it's not exactly, it definitely needs much improvement. It's not that, I, I want to just not make light of it, it is really, needs much improvement over there. So as far as like the process, I don't think anybody is disagreeing with Asa. I think that he has been very helpful with anybody that has come in. I think that the HOA president, he's a very kind man, I think that he is interested in helping his community and I think that we can, I hope that he will come out and meet with the city staff to kind of just go over, you know, the process of normally, like, well, you know, what does the developer usually do through to, to, you know, replat? And just to kind of get the, familiar with all the paperwork process. I think maybe sometimes the website is not very user friendly, you know, maybe, and maybe you can have Mr. Parnell, maybe you can join him and have a meeting with them to kind of just get familiar with all the items that, that would need to be filled out and then bring it back maybe to your HOA and then just kind of discuss it there and then maybe we can get some, some things pushed through. And I mean, it's going to take some time, but obviously paperwork is not as easy as like getting done in a day or two. So maybe, is there any other comments from staff that you want to contribute?
I drove this road actually within the past month and it's deteriorated beyond what I would consider safe. And so I would, I would go along with the suggestions from Mayor Proten that the, the HOA president work in conjunction with the city planner and, and, you know, they, they, the residents need to dedicate themselves to maintaining their own road to some degree and, and they've been negligent in that regard. So I think the city would be willing to assist in any way that they can, but I'll leave it to legal and I'll leave it to the city planner to determine at least a start point for us and hopefully we'll be able to assist them in the future.
What we have been maintained, because since they don't have a lot of help, the maintenance they have is, from what I understand, correct me if I'm wrong, about ten thousand pounds of asphalt that gets dumped in various locations and ninety-year-old residents are out there with shovels, hoes, wheelbarrows. The residents themselves are doing their best to maintain it with what they have. So I do feel for them. I, you know, Dan, I know you've put on the orange vest and helped do road repairs, so that's what they're doing over there. And we all know it can, you know, with, with the cost that they, or the amount of money they have, they're doing their best to maintain it, knowing what they know when they put that Band-Aid on there. That everyone knows once the Band-Aid gets wet, it can come across apart easily and that's what they're faced. And to me, if they, if we get with it, whether it be Mr. Parnell or Mr. Milner, I'd be happy to sit in there with you, Asa, because we have to at least get them to a point where they have the right answers. Because right now they have no answers, you know, and I think if we can at least get them on the right path and then, you know, they make their vote and then if it ends, let's just say it becomes a PIT, then at least we got them to that spot, right? If it becomes a, we buy the road or whatever and then we maintain the road or however it all ends, again, the whole thing tonight was to discuss so we can give them guidance to at least start a process. Right now, there's no process started since July of twenty-three is what I would probably say. And at least let today be day one. And we know it's not a snap of the fingers, but, you know, just like I believe everyone appears echoed, I'm sure they would want to help if we can.
Is there any other comments? Okay, we're good and we're moving on to seven point nine?
And real quick, the reason we are moving on is because there was no vote, just so y'all know. And I, I didn't want y'all to think, okay, they just ended it, there was no vote on this item, this is just to discuss. Asa, I can get with you later on, maybe tomorrow, and set something up and I can, we can reach out to maybe Mr. Milner and try to start getting this ball rolling to give them some guidance. Is that good with you, Mr. Milner?
Moving on to seven point nine, discuss and consider an amendment ordinance to the city's comprehensive plan passed on September twenty-nine, twenty twenty-one by ordinance number twenty twenty-one dash fourteen to change the word desired to required in various portions of said comprehensive plan. I'm going to open this, allow Mr. McNeil to kind of open this because he put this item on the agenda.
I'm gonna open this, allow Mr. McNeil to kind of open this because he put this item on the agenda. Oh.
These microphones, I tell you, if I could ever see these fixed, that would be the greatest thing in the world. Um, so back to the seven point nine. When we, um, I guess I'll just do it this way. When we voted on a project behind City Hall, um, the word desired came up a lot. Um, I believe some of the people in the audience that are here tonight spoke on the word desired. I know Mr. Crawford, uh, I believe Bev, maybe, uh, a few people have spoke on it. And so I guess the moment I heard the word desired, it just kind of like started making me think, well, while I agree in the totality of everything with the comprehensive plan, and, you know, the attorneys looked at it and put the stamp on it, and it was strong, maybe there wasn't Achilles tendon there that kind of came back and got us a little bit, because the word desired could now be misconstrued either way. It was either gonna be desired in a good way or desired in a bad way. Just a, I guess a caveman-style answer here would be, I desire to have a hamburger every day, but I don't get one every day. Thank God, I shouldn't eat a hamburger every day. But the point is, if the word is replaced with required, and I learned this from the city attorney, required and shall be are strong legal terms. There's no, no room for error, you know? I desire one acre. Of course I did. But if it's required and shall be one acre, that leaves no loophole for the developers to be able to say, ooh, it's desired, it's not required. So that's why I wanted this on here. I, I, I do hope it does get approved, because I think what it does is it allows us to not have those loopholes. And I know one of the things that, you know, can come later is maybe we tighten up the comprehensive plan in the future, uh, which I believe that's been addressed to want to have done. Um, but that's, that's where I'm at on, and that's why I put this on there.
Um, Mr. Holland. So in statute three, two, one, three, dot zero, zero, two, the comprehensive plan, it says the governing body of the municipality may adopt a comprehensive plan for the long-range development of the municipality. Uh, municipality may define the content and design of a comprehensive plan. In section, um, three, it says to be used to coordinate and guide the establishment of development regulations. So I just want to make a note of that. And the second thing is, is that when we adopt a comprehensive plan or amend a comprehensive plan, isn't the process include a public, public hearing and a review by the city's planning commission or department? Is that still, is that still in law?
That's, that's in the, I think, two thirteen point zero, zero, three. We may have in our ordinance is something different. I don't know what our ordinance is say for me in the comp plan, because also in that two thirteen zero, zero, three, it lets the city determine how they want to, if they want to come over the different process for many of the comp plan, they can do that. Um, also too, I think, in, in our situation, because this is a text change, you're not really changing the overall, you're not changing this area, hey, we see this in ten years as being a different zoning type, or different density, or whatever. Much, much like zoning, zoning, I think, is a little bit stricter. And so even if you're gonna change, just say, some definitions of zoning, there's a large contingent of people out there that say, you don't need the public hearing, you don't need this, you know, because you're not really changing the zoning of anybody's property. So we're not really changing the comp plan, we're just changing some words in there. I, I think it's less serious when you're talking about a comp plan, because you're not changing the comp plan itself, you're just changing some texts of some words. Now, if the council decided that they feel more comfortable, and they want to have a public hearing, by all means, we, we can have a public hearing, yes.
Okay, so when it talks about the development regulations and all that, and we have, there's a bunch of action items that we need to do, because from the comprehensive plan that was passed in twenty-twenty-one, we were supposed to follow through with strategic planning and other zoning issues. I think there's still about, what, twelve, um, zoning things that, that were addressed in the past and is still carried on, but we haven't actually gone back and, um, you know, broken those zonings down. And I think that we've discussed briefly, because we only spent like a workshop half-day, um, on January thirty-third, talking about some things that planning zoning is going to be working on. Every quarter, we should be getting reports, is that right? I've got some things that we can be able to address for zoning. And so does this, even if we do change the word desire to required, are there items that we would have to do technically, um, from, that goes from planning and zoning to the city council? Do we need to change things in the zones to where we can break down, like, where these areas are? Do we have a single-family homes for one point five, and there's other ones for two point five and all that? Do we need to go back in zoning?
I'm not sure I follow your question. What, what we, we'll do things, but one thing I can answer. Any change that you make on anything after somebody has submitted something, they are not bound by the new changes. So under chapter two forty-five, looking at what we call, those are called vested rights. Once you put the city on notice, you file a plat, you do, you know, certain things, and you're like, hey, those regulations, boom, mark them down in stone. Those are the regulations that apply at that time. The regulations that change later on are not applicable to what's already been passed. Now, if that, if they withdraw it, or it's denied, and, and they come, say, you mentioned zoning. So, or it's denied, and it comes back, comes back a year later, they're gonna be required to follow any new changes that have passed since that. That may answer part of your question, but I'm not sure if that answers all of it.
Partly, partly. Okay, so what are the steps, um, with here? Do we need to just go ahead and, and, um, make a motion for this? Or do we need to amend it to where it includes that we would have to host a public hearing or an, and review process with planning, with the planning commission?
I don't think we need to do a public hearing for a verbiage change, as the city attorney just advised. It's just a text change, uh, and nothing prior to it is affected by it. It's to hold a public hearing over a text change, just, man, I mean, why, why didn't we hold a public hearing on some other issues that were greater than the text change, if I'm being honest, uh? I don't know, that, that just seems like a lot of work, when it's a text change that won't affect the totality of prior developments that are already enforced. This is a text change to the comprehensive plan to make sure that we protect the overall reasoning of the comprehensive plan being put together in the first place.
And just, just so you know, I think your question about a public hearing is a good question. And if this was zoning, because zoning is so much more strictly regulated, and it's so much more technical, and it's so much more detailed. I usually do actually recommend a zoning change, even though, and, and I feel like, you know what, every time I suggest it, but, but zoning, I do suggest a, uh, if you're changing definitions, have a public hearing, take it T and Z, follow all those steps. This one, I think, is a little bit different, because I don't know that you're necessarily changing the plan itself. You're just changing one, although it may appear multiple times in the, uh, plan, you're not really changing the plan itself.
Yeah, I think that there was a big, and, and it's, it's, um, very valid. I mean, a lot of people were very upset about the one and a half to going down to one acre. You know, and I think a lot of people didn't know that that happened, and I just want to make sure that we, we don't miss the boat on that, you know, like, oh, we now made the change, and now it's like official that this is what we're doing, and that's, that's my concern, is like, wait a minute, we could have, like, changed that to, to make sure it's one and a half. So that's kind of. Do you know if we have that in, in, in a policy or anything? Okay, Asa, can you look it up real quick?
It almost seems like you would, uh, if you're wanting to protect the one acre that's in the comp plan now, it almost seems like you would be on board with required, because now you are protecting the one acre. I mean, I understand when the comprehensive plan was done in twenty-twenty-one, it was one and a half acres, and I understand that they, there was a lot of pushback that it went down to one acre. I wasn't on the comprehensive plan when that was done in twenty-one, but that's what was passed. I also believe in the comprehensive plan, if I'm not mistaken, I mean, they called for, uh, two town hall meetings a year. We've only had one and three. So, I mean, it's, it's, it's changing the text to protect the one acre and ensure that the one acre is not gonna be violated. If, if it's gonna be a one and a half acre lot again, then that's a, then again, a new comprehensive plan would need to be put in place. We're just changing a text to protect what's there now. This doesn't affect what came before.
Exactly. On what pages are we gonna be changing the text? Because I'm looking through the comprehensive plan right now, and I don't see, um, like, I don't see it highlighted or marked. Maybe I'm missing it. I understand that, but I want to see it before I vote on it. So I want to know exactly what pages, so I can read it, to see if it does interfere with the rest of verbiage.
I mean, like, just, if I just did a search right now, the first one is identify required current and future public services. I mean, we just need to be careful with where, where we're even highlighting desire. I mean, maybe we need to be a little bit more specific. I don't know.
Brian, have you been able to identify specifically located within the comp plan which desires to requires you are seeking to change?
It is, it is the ones where it's the one acre. It's, it's specifically anything that is going to give the totality of the acreage. So required one acre, not required a sidewalk over here. It's, it's required one acre, again, to protect exactly what the comprehensive plan was put in place for. We saw the loophole happen with the word desired. This is to correct that loophole from happening again, until a new comprehensive plan can be worked out. It's changing the word from desired to required on the size of the lots. So anywhere there would be a size of the lot, Councilman McLendon, it would be those words of required, of, that would be changed to required.
Connor, would you be able to advise us on which areas might be strategic change that we seeking?
So I went out looking for my notes. I did a, a pretty thorough look through it. There's twenty-one desired in the document, um, twenty-one times where it says desired. I don't think there's ones where it says are desired one-acre lots. Um, it's referred to one-acre lots a variety of times throughout the document. It never says desired one-acre lots. Um, and the uses of desired throughout the, are used in a lot of different areas. I think it's admirable, as you explain it, what you want to do. I don't know if this is exactly the right, as, as Councilmember McLendon was saying. Identifying them and saying, not this, not this, not, I don't think, and all twenty-one would probably go. Um, on page, um, on page, um, twenty, I mean, on twenty-one, it says desired, it shows the vision framework. And it shows all the different things that you're gonna, and, and it points to desired is the, is the word that it points to. Desired development services and priorities. So then you'd say, all those things are required. Um, and so it substantially changes what's going on and, and what's saying. Back in, as, as, um, Mayor Protem was talking about, um, the, um, the action items and stuff. There's one on recreation and, and parks, and I apologize, I can't find my notes, I, I, I just, somebody must have, I blame it, I throw them away or something.
It was the gremlins.
And the Parks and Rec, it says, complete a Parks and Recreation Study to Identify Existing and Desired, switch it to Required, Future Levels of Services for Parks and Recreation Consistent with Texas Park and Wildlife Department, so we can get grants. Um, I don't think that's what you're saying, and I don't think there's, I didn't see any on the twenty-one that I went through. I just did a word-perfect search and replace, and I went to the next, the next, the next, the next, as I went through the document. Um, I think, like I said, I think it's admirable of what is, and I understand what you're trying to do, I don't think that does it. And, and as well as, I think through the ordinance process that we've talked about, is probably where you want to do it, not, not through the comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan is a, is not a regulatory plan. It, I mean, it's been used as a regulatory tool. It's, it's guidance, it's vision, it's, this is what we hope to. It talks throughout this document, document about having the planning commission review it once a year by August, every year. I, I don't know if they've done it or not, maybe they have, maybe they haven't. Um, but it, there's a lot of things that if you want to require instead of desire, um, but this is more of a, this is our vision, this is our goals, this is where we want to be. And if you want to have a regulatory and have a required, those happen through ordinances and not through comprehensive plans. You can utilize, and part of your recitals can be comprehensive plan included throughout, in my opinion. Um, but it's not, um, this is not the way to do it. You, I think through an ordinance process and, and utilizing the same words as Councilmember McNeil was saying. Um, and you can, you can go and, and create an ordinance that just says those things. But just transitioning those words in here, I, I don't think it'll get the intent that, that, that you're looking for.
So, Mr. Holland, what Conrad is saying is that this is a, the, the comprehensive plan is really a, a, a recommendation as to how we should, on our vision and how we should develop. But it doesn't have any statutory enforcement. And so what he's suggesting is that we go to an ordinance rather than, rather than just modify the plan itself, because the plan, even if you do change from desire to absolutely necess, being necessary, then it, it, there's no enforcement behind that. Am I correct?
Uh, mostly. So I'm not sure what he means by go to an ordinance, because we adopted the comp plan by ordinance. It's not, he is. No, what, what you've adopted something by ordinance? It's a, when you adopt something by ordinance, you're saying, you can do it two different ways. You can actually cut and paste the entire comp plan in, say, section one of the ordinance, and say, hey, look, we've adopted this comprehensive plan, here it is. That is a lot of trouble, a lot of hassle. What I prefer to do, especially if you want to amend it, what I prefer to do is section one, you know, uh, the city council is approving, adopting, we think it's the best truth of the city, we've adopted complen, comprehensive plan, attached Exhibit A, incorporated here and by reference, and boom, there it is. You just attach the comprehensive plan to Exhibit A. So that's part of the ordinance. So it, yeah, it's the same thing as it being an ordinance itself.
Okay, ready, you opened up the comprehensive plan, the first, second paragraph. It says, the comprehensive plan for the city of McLendon Chisholm is a guide. Doesn't say a requirement, it says is a guide. So by ordinance, you accept it, and you're saying it's a guide by ordinance. So, and then it goes on to talk, talk about to help with, guide with future development and redevelopment of the city. Councilmember McNeil, I apologize, on page forty, when it starts talking about the uses, and that they list all the uses in an ag zone, in a, in all the different zones, that's exactly where you're looking at, I believe. I believe that's exactly. So if you pull out just that section, potentially, and say, that, those are the sections that talk about all of our zoning, and because it, like, number one of all those different zones, it talks about a, a, a one acre, um, lot size. If you look at that area, I believe that maybe is where you're, you were headed, and, and I, and, and that's, but there, it goes all over the place for desire to require.
It literally has a highlight, it's a, a subheading that says, desired development characteristics. Maximum density of one dwelling unit per five acres for residential uses, exclusive of floodplain and residential way. And it lists down agri-tulture-related, and, and, and then there's other subheadings that say the same thing, and then it's like higher amounts of acreage. So, yeah, like, uh, overall land use and design policies. Section B, um, it says lots larger than one acre are highly encouraged with new development.
I, I do need to point out one thing too, that I think is, uh, really important. While, as Councilmember Tucker was talking about, your comprehensive plan is not a regulatory document in and of itself. It doesn't have the efficacy of the statute or anything like that, and it is, it's a planning tool, it's a guide. Okay, now, a couple of things, having said. Having said that, why have it if you're not going to go buy it? That's number one. Number two, it's a little different. It's almost like a quasi judicial board, like your BOA. I would say there is a statutory aspect when it comes to zoning. And the reason why is because two eleven says, hey, when you pass the zoning ordinance, it has got at the time you're passing it, it has to be consistent with your comp plan. And I'm just talking about as an attorney who's litigated a lot in twenty five years, good or bad, that if I had a comp plan that said something was required and we've got a zoning ordinance that deviated from that required section, I I would have a little angst and I would have a little because I I couldn't necessarily. I could see the argument that is not when you adopted it. If it changed what was required in the comp plan, then I could see, hey, you know what? It wasn't consistent. That'd be the argument I'd make on the other side. Hey, your comp plan right here in section forty for these, it says it's required. But you did a zoning ordinance that was different from the comp plan versus the way we have it now where it says desired. I don't think there's really any teeth to that if somebody wanted to argue that. So I do have to point out that one one thing there. I do think it's got a little bit more force and teeth behind it when you're talking about zoning. And let's face it, eighty five, ninety percent of the time when you're talking about a comp plan, it's in conformity with zoning.
On page forty four, it says desired development characteristics up at the top. And then the first bullet point is minimum lot size of one acre residential uses. So if it said required developmental, or I'm sorry, required development characteristics, then that minimum lot size of one acre is now staying required. So yes, Conrad, it does not say required one acre, but in the desired development characteristics, the first bullet point is the minimum of one acre. That's where if if that had said required, if that had said required, you know, that could have maybe been something that we could always fall back on. Again, it's if it's a text change to that one word, I think that gives us, as our attorney just said, gives us some teeth in the fight. And again, obviously, this has to be a a vote. So I mean, if the council feels that the word desired is is good enough, then, you know, that's that's what democracy is all about. You know, we we put it to a vote and if they say it stays the same, then guess what? It stays the same. There's no win or lose here. This is this is for this is what it's about.
I I agree. And I think in from page forty on, with all the different zones that it that it identifies where you just read the one from, I think that's what you were looking for, not the desired, not not by blanketing, saying switch all the desires to to required. I mean, there's on on page thirty one, it says, as McLendon Chisholm continues to grow, it's important to plan for a level of development the community wants and what associated priorities are desired to fund with limited resources. Switch desire to required. So you're saying these are the things that are required. We are required to fund with our limited resources. I mean, that I mean, you're requiring yourselves. You're you're binding your own hands, saying that these are the things we have to we have to fund.
Yeah, well, I would desire I would desire the word replaced to required on page forty four.
No, no, I I think.
I know I was kind of just making a little bit of fun to bring some light to the room zone.
I think in that area is where where you were heading. I mean, in this, instead of blanketing everything, as Councilmember McLendon said, but that area looks like where you were you were at. So. A comprehensive plan, I I've been in this business for thirty four years. I've never seen the comprehensive plan be used as a regulatory tool. I don't think a judge would say that. I don't think I don't I just can't see because no cities use it as a regulatory tool. If you want to pull that out, those things and say required, I I mean, there's commercial design guidelines and there's things that councils basically know. Have you read our guidelines? And when a developer comes in and they're like, oh, their guidelines? Yeah, they're sort of guidelines. They're stuff that we want, okay?
Yeah, you're right. So let me ask you this. We all remember somebody's mic. Conrad, yours please. So it's like we're putting desire as not such a big deal now. But when the tons of people got up to speak and use the word desired, we were listening, right? I mean, I remember even one person saying, you desire our vote? So if the word desired was strong then, then it seems like it's changing it to required gives that bite. So we're only changing one word because, you know, we we saw desired be used both ways. And I think if it's if that word is changed, required development characteristics, bullet point one, minimum lot size, one acre. I say this often, we're going to start talking in circles. So that's where I'm at. If y'all want to put it to a vote, put it to a vote. But at this point, we're talking in circles.
Yeah, I just want to say that I've been an advocate for one acre one home for a long, long time. And in many instances, I haven't deviated from that that I can remember. However, this community is constantly changing. And as I go out in the community and speak to individuals, I find that that not everybody is adherent to that desire. And so in my mind, I'm starting to think, well, maybe I'm not as in tune with the community as I thought I was. And so there was a suggestion that, and I I actually want to postpone this a little bit for for an actual vote. And and the reason being is I would like to have a public meeting or allow for public comments on this. I don't think we're going to lose anything by it. This has been existing for a long, long time and it would be expedient to make a vote tonight. But I would like to include, you know, commentary from the from the public. I think I need to be refreshed in a sense, knowing that my vote is going to be consistent and it had been in the past and it's going to be validated by what I hear from these folks. So from that standpoint, I I just don't think that we would lose anything by getting that public feedback because I know the community demographic is changing very rapidly.
Councilmember Tucker, I actually, someone mics need to go off red just so we don't echo again.
I'm the chair at the moment. Mr. Woodbury, can you can you update us on where are you on the reports with P and Z on zoning? Because you were working on that for for a while now.
And I'm going to go ahead and finish my sentence. So.
Mr. Asa is.
Mr. Hallid, can you please do a point of order here? I should be able to finish my sentence. Am I right?
I had the mic on. He just started talking. So, Mr. Asa, would you please continue? Where are you on your report?
So right now, we're working to update the language for the water, not just for the preliminary applications, but for site plans and things of that nature. And then also, we're working on an ordinance, working on a speed zone ordinance. And then we're also working on ordinances to do zone changes. So that we have a one and a half zoning, but we don't have one acre lot zoning. So that's something that we're working to do. I'm sorry, were you about to say so? Oh, so that is something that I am drafting and that is something that I will have in front of P and Z on the sixteen.
Okay, Mr. McNeil.
Thank you. I was actually going to agree with Councilmember Tucker and say, I have no issues with tabling this to get some feedback if that's what is desired.
Okay, since this is a just oh, thank you. Go ahead.
Just one quick comment. And and it seems like our, you know, Mr. Hall has a lot to offer in terms of this conversation. And I'm taking to heart not only Tucker's, Dan Tucker's ideas here, but also what Floyd said because that's that's how I feel is I kind of feel like a lined out version so that the public can see it and review it and the specifics of it. So this is something I'd like to see come back because I am deeply sympathetic, not just to one, but to one and a half acres. But I think, again, to the point of kind of how I conduct business, which is I'd like to see this line out and so the public can see it as well. And they know what they're what we're voting on and can see what's coming in and then getting the public comments. It gives us some time to do that.
Yeah, I I'm good with that. I can I can put that together, table this. I'll I'll get the red ink stick out and put it to work. And then I will ask for it to be put back on an agenda item. And then maybe we can make sure that the public has some time where they can put together some input they'd like. I don't know if we can maybe combine that. Maybe we can figure something out. But I have no problem putting putting this back on the table again to show that not every ward of desire needs to be lined out. It's just the ones that would be applicable to what the goal was here tonight. So I have no problem with that. I'm that's that's an easy one. I appreciated Councilmember Tucker's input as well as yours, Mr. Day and Mr. McLendon.
So y'all don't have to table it because that way you'll be required to table it to a date certain. If you just take no action, you can bring it back where you feel like it. And then y'all can now decide if you just desire a public hearing or if you're going to require a public hearing on this. Come on, that was funny. And then just, you know, we could even talk about a date for it if you want to do that and and, you know, set it up and you can direct staff to get it done if you want.
Well, then let's just make no let's move to do nothing and we'll let it die. And I'll I'll re reestablish everything and put it back on.
Thank you.
What do y'all want to do about a public hearing?
I think I think we should wait for Mr. Woodbury to get done. It's May sixteenth, right, that you had your meeting with planning. I don't want I don't want to exit them out. I think that they should be a part of that discussion as well.
April sixteenth.
Sorry, thank you, April sixteenth. And then if you can if you can get back with Councilmember McNeil, you know, let him know kind of your report and then we can get this on the next agenda after that, Council fair?
Yes, that sounds good. And I'll be working with you, Mr. McNeil.
Thank you, everyone, for listening. I appreciate everybody.
Okay, moving on to section seven dot ten, discussion and action to fill an alternate position in the Planning and Zoning Commission. Rich Dean, oh, I don't remember if you meant to do that. Okay, there was two applications submitted. Can you speak to that, Mr. Woodbury, about planning zoning?
I can quickly, and I'll let him follow up. It was requested on the agenda item for one and and an application was received for Mr. Dean. In the in the interim, we had Mr. Mr. Packer submit an application, too. He came and talked to to our architects and that's what he said. I'd love to be on it. And there's another there's two alternate positions that are are available. So that's why that name got put on there.
So we have two. Okay, so we had I knew one was moving and then so we have two spaces of opportunity?
We we have a an alternate planning commission member that is is going to push you over and sit up at the dais with you here in next city council meeting.
Mr. McNeil, I know you put it on. Did you have anything to say? Because you you obviously have interviewed him.
I believe Mr. Kipit may have interviewed him when he turned in the application. Mr. Dean is here. He could speak on that. I know I have spoke with Mr. Dean a few times, but as far as, you know, with his knowledge, as far as his business background and and his degree and stuff, but as as far as an interview, I'm going to assume that Mr. Kipit did interview you. You can nod your head. Yeah, so I mean, I think that was the extent of that. I believe there's two spots open. So we were going to be voting on, I'm assuming, accepting Mr. Dean and Mr. Packer into P and Z to have that already set up. There's not really much on that, if that makes sense. Ms. Balkam, not sure.
All right, well, I'll open up for a motion for to fill an alternate position on the Planning and Zoning Commission on seven point ten.
I would like to make a motion or I would like to move to fill an alternate position on Planning and Zoning Commission with the application by Rich Dean. And if there is two, then Mr. Packer as well.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion on this further about this?
Are we going one or two positions? Do we know for sure?
You you're certain that there's two alternate positions? Now, the answer is yes?
Yes.
Okay, the only thing I asked, if someone can get it in writing with these gentlemen, to make sure they respond that they're coming to the meeting, so that was a big deal and that every all the other gentleman confirmed that they will be responding by email. Hey, I'm coming. And then, you know, that they're they're committed to coming to the meetings and stuff. Okay, so we'll go ahead and vote. All in favor of seven point ten, the to fill the alternate positions on the Planning and Zoning Commission for Mr. Rich Dean and Jerry Packer. All in favor? I it all passed.
Welcome to P and Z there, Mr. Dean.
So now we're moving on to seven point eleven, discuss and consider attending resolution. Seven point eleven, discuss and consider amending resolution number twenty twenty three dash zero six, calling for the city and our states to work together towards an asset transfer agreement and which was passed on May twenty four, twenty twenty three, but repealing and replacing section four in its entirety. I will open for Mr. Tucker to speak on this and then followed by Mr. Day.
I'm going to be introducing a resolution to modify Resolution twenty twenty three dash six, which was passed back in May of twenty three. And just to give you a little bit of background information on this, back in May of twenty twenty three, the city council voted to give direction and authority to the to the mayor and the city administrator to do what's necessary to start negotiations for an asset transfer agreement between the city and RCH Water Supply Company. Within a very short period of time, the negotiations seemed to subside. Wasn't a lot of success there. And the city itself decided that it was going to continue on. And through a process which you might consider imminent domain, though it's not listed as such in the Texas code, we we are pursuing a a application through PUC to basically take over RCH within the city limits. And I think this is the appropriate thing to do. I've always been an advocate of of this process. We've had several instances where boiling water had to come into play. And then beyond that, last year, we were in stage five alert for several months. So I think to preserve the health, safety and welfare of the citizens of McLendon Chisholm and to some degree, those in the ETJ, that we had a valid pursuit. At the time that we voted, most of the authority was given to city administrator and the mayor. And by extension, it became the mayor pro tem. And so the process went on and our pursuit through PUC and there were some difficulties. And eventually a law judge deemed our notice of intent was deficient. And so it really kind of put a lull on on the process. And there started a debate as to how to appropriately go start this process over. And I'm still an advocate that this should be a process that we should pursue and that the city should have the ability to control water within the city. And to some degree, the ETJ, if those folks out there are willing. However, I I do want to make a modification in the resolution through through the resolution I'm providing, and that is to direct the city attorney, or city attorney, the city administrator and the city council to be the parties that are directing this activity. And so I'm just going to read. I'm going to thank Mr. Day's wife, Councilmember Day's wife, in assisting me with this write up because mine was a little bit more contorted and more difficult to understand. But in section four of this new resolution, it is very, very clear as to what direction I want to go. It says, any and all applications, notices, agreements, purchases, contracts, transfers, acquisitions and any and all other matters and actions related to water within the McLennan Chisholm municipal boundaries pursuant to Texas Code, Water Code thirteen shall receive continued review, oversight and final approval by the city council of McLennan Chisholm. The city council may authorize the city administrator under the direction, oversight, continued review and final approval of the city council to negotiate, take necessary clerical actions and execute matters related to water and water corporations and operators for benefit of the city of McLennan Chisholm. So i- in essence, what I'm looking for here is that the city administrator, through the direction of the city council, have the authorities to pursue uh water negotiations, water agreements, uh PUC applications, et cetera. So it will be the council that will be the definitive voice when it comes to making these decisions.
What he said, um largely. Um, um, I mean, I didn't have anything prepared for this. I mean, this, to me, is pretty self-evident. Uh, what I feel like is, it's, it's opening it up, it's democratizing it, it's liberalizing the, the approach to uh all issues under the Water Code, chapter thirteen. And, and this, this is for, this is not specific to R C H. It's all issues under chapter thirteen. So um, which is pretty broad and it's gonna be broadening up in the future for the city. So this is something that is pretty important, I think, in general. Um, there is one friendly amendment I have to offer or request, Mr. Tucker. There was a single accidental spelling error. Um, McLennan Chisholm is actually written three times, but there's somehow it got translated improperly. So we have to correct that one. It's the very first one. Uh, if, if, if you guys, would you accept the friendly, the friendly amendment?
I will.
So Mr. Halla, if we were to go and approve this, um what difference does it make in the process that was expressed from the A L J? When we told there was a process that we needed to follow? And would that make? Basically, what I'm saying is I think that we're supposed to produce a new resolution, not go amend an older resolution. So I'm not sure that we, that this is will be helpful at this time.
That question, I mean, I, I don't know. That's the first I'm hearing. And I'm not saying you're wrong. I'm just saying that's the first I'm hearing about a new resolution. I mean, I guess arguably it is a new resolution because it's got a whole new resolution number on there and the council is passing it, even though it may be amending a prior one. But yeah, as far as like what the, what that, that'd be something for Ms. Rogers.
So what I'm suggesting, I think it would be good, is probably sending it over to our water attorney to review. And so I'm not saying that you can choose to go ahead and um make the motion and all that, but um I think we're probably prudent for the water attorney to review what you're suggesting.
I've passed by Mr. Halla. He seems to agree that it's, it's allowed, that this will amend the previous resolution and we can always pass a new resolution in the future if need be. Uh, so I, I don't see need to be passing this by the water attorney at this point in time.
Are you expecting the city administrator to go and send out or produce a letter to come back to city council for, you know, to be able to review at the next city council meeting?
Letter of what, what type? What letter are we looking at?
Well, that's the beginning process of it. But yes, you would have, he says, discuss and consider.
I think that we'll be able to have that conversation with, with legal on that and she'll alert us as to what we need to have done. And the, the, the council will direct city administrator uh to that point.
Thank you. Okay, any other discussion or actually, you know what, we'll go ahead and just go ahead and make a vote on this. Anybody um would like to make a motion for seven point one, I'm sorry, seven point eleven with your friendly amendment that you were suggesting?
So I, I, so I guess I would say, I, I moved to, I, I moved to, has the word amending in front of resolutions, which is throwing off my verbiage. Yeah, I, I, I.
Hold on, I have a question.
Yes, yes.
Thank you. So Dan, specifically what has given you concern to make this change? Like, can you point to two or three different?
See, I can tell you specifically. You know, I want the city council to take authority over all issues of water in, working in conjunction with the city administrator. And what I'm really attempting to do is obviate the mayor's position and by extension, the mayor pro temp in participation with this. Now, as a city council person, the mayor pro temp is, is a participant along with the rest of us when we make decisions on water. But at this point in time, I think there's been a trust factor. It's, I, I think people have lost confidence in the fact that after a year and a half, we were pushed back by L, A L J over notice of intent, which almost by definition was a checkbox kind of document that needed to be submitted to P U C. And what we submitted was something that I didn't recognize all the criteria being met myself. And I'm not a lawyer, but it was the easy C. It was, it was a mishmash of conversations, editorials and some semblance of legalese that never, never qualified and addressed a criteria that specifically P U C was asking for. And, and, and so from that standpoint, I think there was confidence lost after spending so much time and, and Mayor Pro Temp has, has been diligent, hardworking, and I applaud all her efforts. But that's, that was a start point for us. And we got knocked down after a year and a half on that document. It should never have been.
The notice of intent that they're talking about would have started in twenty twenty-two, but at that time, everybody was friendly and everybody was assuming that R C H was coming and working out things with the city. And multiple times, it has been said that they had to go through the U S Postal Service, but that didn't happen. It was an email that was sent originally. So in July, there was a uh document that was created from our water attorney that said to explanation of how we have processed why we're here to go ahead and move forward. That was the, the notice intent that was, uh, that was created in July.
Then if, if you look at Texas code, there is a definition as to the criteria that need to be met when you're submitting a notice of intent. Had we looked at that and basically, th- there are six or seven criteria that exist. All we really had to do was address each of those criteria and answer those statements. It's clearly defined. We didn't do that. And so we lost momentum. We lost momentum of a year and a half. And here, you know, we could have done that in spite of our relationship at that time maybe being somewhat good with R C H. But something as simple as a notice of intent where it's defining code and we didn't follow it.
I would like to make a comment. I actually echo uh Councilmember Tucker on this. He is um been very concerned, just as all of us as council members and, and customers of R C H. And all that seven point eleven is asking is to give exactly what should have happened on the start of this all. All of council should have had a, an overall say in vote and voice in this. And I think if that would have happened, maybe we would have been able to uh work together. I mean, it just, it, it literally falls back on the transparency of everything here. I mean, when you have some council members left in the dark and trying to figure stuff out and then to be asked to make a vote on it, it's just, it's just, I mean, even to echo Councilmember McLennan a minute ago saying, I want to see it, but it's all lined out. Well, I want to see it too. I want to be a part of it too. And it, and I think exactly what uh the two council members have put together here is exactly what this council needs to be doing at this point in time to regain the trust. I mean, to collaboratively work together is always gonna be better than working against one another. And I, I applaud both of them for the efforts to put this together and I I support them.
I don't recall anytime anyone on this council has asked for information for water over the past two years and been denied. So.
I'm pretty sure I have and I have been.
So from that perspective, it's incumbent upon city council when questioned. So, so what you're saying, Mayor Pro Temp, our legal counsel, our own and our water lawyer, our city administrator and a mayor dropped the ball.
I'll say, yeah, I, I, in my, in my, my perspective is, they failed. They failed us, they failed the city. You asked me a question.
It wasn't, it wasn't a question. It was a statement.
Okay, I'll, I'll, I'll reply with another statement. Is that, I think, yes, absolutely, they failed the city.
And I tend to disagree.
And that's your prerogative.
I just wanted to make sure to note that you were on council, you were on council in twenty twenty-two, whenever you were told that how the process was with the thirteen point three oh one. And it's important to understand, I understand, you may not be familiar with how the process works. I get it. Okay, but the thing is, the water attorney advised you on that process. You had the agreement. An agreement that told you a timeline of events that needed to occur. There would needed to be an election. There needs to be audits. There needed to be an inspection process.
I will only agree to the fact that I made a mistake in voting for that because w- w- it, it turned out to be terrible. It turned out to be a terrible vote and only in, in retrospect do I see it.
And I understand like the frustration. I get it. Believe me, I'm frustrated as much as the next person because I wish that there was, there was just a different.
Not only am I frustrated, I want to go in a new direction and that's why I proposed this resolution.
Well, thank you. At, as far as understanding the process, the thirteen three oh one, the difference between the thirteen three oh one and the thirteen point two five five is accountability. I just want to make sure that whenever.
I understand the difference between three oh one and two five five.
The issue is, is making sure that there is some sort of time set.
I completely understand that.
Okay.
And if you notice in the resolution, it just said Texas Code, Water Code thirteen, did not say three oh one or two five five. That's later to be defined.
Those are the only two options that, that direction we're.
And I completely understand that. I understand.
Well, I don't want anyone to misunderstand that there is only that process. It's either voluntary or involuntary.
I think, I think that you've said it a number of times and both I understand and I think much of the audience understands, including the city council people here.
Anyway, we're gonna go ahead and vote for seven um point eleven regarding discussion and just consider amending resolution number twenty twenty-three dash zero six. Calling for the city and R C H work together towards an asset transfer agreement which was passed on May twenty-four, twenty twenty-three, but repealing with the friendly amendment or section four. There was already a motion and a second. All in favor?
Who was the second? He was the motion.
Then you were the second. Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Nay. Motion passes. Okay, moving on to seven point twelve, discussion and possible action to introduce and discuss relevant concepts and the tentative scope of a future public trail network for the city McLennan Chisholm as envisioned in the comprehensive plan and how said network could operate in conjunction with future parks, businesses, subdivisions and road layouts throughout the city. Possible action included, but is not limited to assigning staff to create a concept plan that generates map and financial details showing how such a system could be brought about and assigning a date for the staff report and presentation to be due. Conrad, can you remind me, didn't we already give instruction for uh Burdette to return back with a strategic planning in regard to addressing um those commercial guidelines and some other parts of that?
Oh, I'm sorry. That's my microphone on. We, we asked them, they um are submitting a, an addition. To do that, they're, they're gonna submit an additional cost to the city um to complete that work. And they'll come to the council and you can vote if that's what you want.
Okay, wonderful. And do you have an idea when that is supposed to be coming?
Anytime. I can remind them. I'm, I'm sure they could give that to me right away.
Okay, wonderful. Okay, um, Mr. Tucker, Councilmember Tucker and Day, you go ahead and, when you, whoever wants to start.
So this is an idea that's been kicked around all over the county and I've talked to a lot of people, including uh new Commissioner-elect Lipti uh on this. He's very excited about the idea of a trail network throughout the county. Uh, we independently, uh, uh, the city uh has uh through the Economic Development Committee, which is Matt DeFonct, had come up with this idea and was kicking it around. It's something that has been passed around by citizens off and on. And one of the ideas is to find a way to get everybody to begin to spend time outside, enjoy each other's neighborhood and to, as an aggregate, treat the city almost like a large park, rather than having a city park where everybody conveys. It acts, it operates this way through an interconnected trail system, walking trail system, horse trail system, some type of system where people have the ability to go from point A to point B throughout the city without having to be stuck on five fifty or, you know, something like this. My children are kind of old school. My son rides an old school nineteen eighty style Huffy. Um, he's seven years old. You know, it's the last time I saw a kid on a Huffy, right? And um, and I, I'm kind of excited about the idea of people riding their horses, riding their Huffys around, people riding, you know, having access to a schoolway where they can go to school uh along a trail system or a sidewalk, a, a sidewalk system that's gonna be functioning. And also funnel this stuff into the large investment that the city is clearly dedicated towards the Heritage Center, which allows people to pass through. In terms of how this might connect into a larger system countywide, uh Mr. Lipti has brought up the idea that he would like to see people in McLennan Chisholm be able to ride their bikes or get in a, uh, I keep calling them golf cart, go kart, golf cart, sorry. Golf cart and you can, or, or a bicycle and you go all the way to Lake Ray Hubbard. And then from Lake Ray Hubbard, you go from Terry Park all the way up to the northern part, north of I thirty, back around and then all the way around. So you can do an entire circuit throughout the county completely on your bicycle without having to be run over by a, a, you know, a wild car on the five fifty or something like this. It, it's kind of an exciting idea. Uh, the reason why I put this on here was to simply nucleate it into the co- public consciousness and trying to get this ball rolling because I think this is gonna happen. I think this, the, the community wants it, it's popular. The question is, what is it gonna look like? How does it function? And so somebody's gotta sit down and put a pen to the paper and give a PowerPoint presentation, show what the city can do, how it can fund it, uh, what do we already have, have currently and how do we state it all together? So that's really what this was all intended to do. I've spitballed some ideas, you know, with Conrad and with everybody on the council at some point. People know I'm really excited about outdoors and kind of stuff here in the city. Um, and I, I, and I was really excited, uh, having sat down with Conrad one time and we were kind of spitballing it back and forth. And he was just a well of information. He's like, oh, you gotta check out this and we got this. I said, man, we gotta get this going. And so that's what nucleates this onto the agenda. It's from this agenda, it's from, it's from our minds to the paper and from the paper to reality. And that's the goal is to get this thing started. Thank you.
Did you, Councilmember Tucker, you have something to say?
I second this uh, this agenda item and I'm leaving it to Councilmember Day to be the voice of it all. He, he's got the passion and certainly. He, he's got the passion, and certainly, I, 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 I'm attuned to this, and we just, earlier before City Council meeting, we spoke to, uh, the folks, Bert, Bert Burdette, and they were very likened to it, and they want to see more of this on some of their other projects, and so, yeah, I've spoken to folks up in, uh, at the Commissioners' Court on this, and, uh, apparently it, it's something that, uh, Lauren Lipti, uh, wants to pursue, so yeah, I'm, I'm all in favor of it.
Mr. Holla?
I just need to add that Conrad and Asa let me know that it is in fact not Councilmember Day's son's Huffy, it's his own Huffy, and there's evidence according to that.
I can, I can also say, um, Mayor Protemp, members of the council, I've worked in cities where we worked on trail, trail networks, and we did interconnecting, um, to big huge lakes, to, to recreational places, and the, the number of demographics you get on the trail system, you get moms pushing strollers, you get kids riding bikes, you get elders that say, "Left, left, left," as they zoom by on their bikes, that's kind of problematic sometimes, on both sides. But you have a gravel part for three feet on their, on one side of it for horses and, and other things. So a ped, bike, horse, trail that's interconnecting, um, specifically through our city, but also potentially into other places, um, is a great quality of life thing, in my opinion, that, that you can, um, create, and, and sometimes following, um, the, the easement lines of, of gas companies and power companies that, that will even help fund the process. Um, there's federal money that, that you can seek after, um, and it's something that, as, as Councilmember Day said, it's, it's like a long linear park system that's very skinny, and, and you weave and go wherever you do it, and, and if you connect to the commercial sector, you connect to the, to different neighborhoods, to the schools, to other things, and it gets people from walking directly, potentially on the streets, where it's kind of a community with, other than one specific development, that is sands, um, sidewalks. So it's people walking streets, and, um, so it's, it's kind of a fun thing, it's kind of a, you meet people, sometimes you never know their name, but it's like, "Oh, I see that guy every single day," and I wave at him, then I see him in the grocery store or something, and so it's like, "Wow, I feel like we're friends," and you become friends. So it, it has been, in my opinion, in my experience, a very positive thing of trying to work a citywide trail network.
Yeah, I just want to applaud, uh, Councilmember Day on this one, because, uh, day-to-day basis, when I talk to people out in the community and amongst friends, we're usually speaking about water, arguing about water, or trying to contemplate something about water and how to fix it, but this is one of these big ticket items or, uh, issues or agenda item that, that goes beyond, it has a vision to it, and when water is said and done in a year or two or three, this is something that's going to continue to exist for the pleasures of the entire community for 30, 40, 50 years from now. So, this is, sometimes we, we get lost, we're so inundated with one big ticket, uh, issue that everybody divides, you know, it goes to opposite sides and fights over, it seems like, whether it's on Facebook or whatever, social media, but this is the type of item that we should all kind of coalesce together on and, uh, help pursue a vision that I think will make, uh, McLennan Chisholm a better place to live.
Absolutely. You know, the, when Dana, Commissioner Dana McEllicott was speaking today on the, uh, 2050 Plan, uh, when I was perusing through some of the paperwork, uh, one of the quotes caught me, and I think it ties into exactly what Councilmember Day was saying, and the quote that I pointed out was, "Out of many, one." So out of many trails, many as in M-A-N-Y, not M-I-N-I, it creates one, and I, I, good job. I mean, it literally without probably knowing was hitting exactly what the 2050 Plan was wanting to do as well.
I'd like to say that I knew that, but I didn't, so thank you, I appreciate that.
All right, well, I'm going to head, um, you say possible action, I mean, is it, I mean, what are, what are you proposing as your, your, your motion here?
Well, what I wanted to do, and what I was, uh, wanted to run by the council in terms of possible action, was empowering the, the, the staff to be able to take time to, to exact their own intellectual freedom, to sit down, be creative. I want to see what our amazing staff, what Asa had, what can you do, man? Okay, can you put some pen, uh, some ink on, on some paper and give me a presentation, maybe sometime this summer, and, and show me what you think, and maybe run it by Conrad, run it by, you know, run it by people and see what, see what you think, and, and then from there, we can start bending the lines, right? I mean, it, it has to start with, somebody's got to put the pen to the paper and show a map, and, and then we know how this is going to function and how it would work, and then the public can then come and provide that feedback later on, saying, "Well, we want our trail network to be integral to our commercial district," you know, where you can go to an event at the, maybe at the city, you know, they come to a City Council meeting, and then they go to, for example, our winery, uh, because it's not responsible to leave the winery, uh, driving, so you got to make sure that you, you walk on our, one of our new pristine trails. So I, I, I wanted to empower the, 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 uh, the staff to, to begin that intellectual exercise of putting together something from which we can then, effectively the scaffolding for which we can start hanging drywall and build this idea out.
You know, Councilmember Day mentioned in his presentation that he wanted, it, he said, his word was to nucleate it, and I leaned over to Asa and we both didn't know what it was, and our esteemed city attorney says, "Psh, I had not only spelled that right in first grade, first grade spelling," but he added the definition and everything right there, so it's, it's a pleasure sitting at the table with him.
Okay, so are you, uh, it sounds like you want to get direction, um, to the staff, and it sounds like he's, um, Asa's, um, interested in doing that, is that, is that satisfactory to this council to have direction given to Mr. Woodbury to return, um, uh, with some sort of presentation?
Well, Woodbury or the, the staff at large, I mean, I don't, how would you guys do, how would you guys probably handle this type of direction?
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll discuss and we'll come back to the council with something.
Okay, thank you so much, and moving on to seven point 13, appoint council member to newly create a development review committee, uh, DRC.
DRC.
Miss, Councilmember Tucker, um, you lead on that one.
So, uh, several weeks ago, I think we, we went through the process of, um, creating a development review committee, uh, for residential and, and business, uh, purposes, and I, at that time, I suggested that we have a member from council attend whatever meetings, uh, as developers or business personnel came through and, and, and had proposed those that they wanted to, uh, provide, uh, prior to coming to council and, and making presentations, um, that, that individual would attend any meetings, uh, receive any information pertinent to a development, uh, he would provide input, he or she would provide input, uh, into some decision-making, early on decision-making, and so what we failed to do was to appoint an individual to that committee, and so this is just a return to that item where we, uh, created the committee, and at that point, I assume we were going to, uh, assign somebody to that committee, but, uh, we failed to do so, and so this is back on the agenda.
I apologize, but I don't recall actually forming a committee called Development Review Committee. I think that you suggested a, you wanted another council member to be attending that, so...
Yeah, and that's perfectly fine, it was just phrased like this, on, on this, and I apologize for the phrasing, but yeah, and that's basically what I wanted, was a, a, another, or a council member to attend various meetings, receive, uh, communications, be able to, uh, add input, um, in all areas, whether it's, uh, business or residential development. Can we do that? We do it, we do it for water, so I, I'm thinking that this would just parallel that.
Right, but we would, we actually created a committee, um, when you did that. Um, we already have a development review committee already established with staff, you have your engineer, you have your wa, your, I'm sorry, the attorney, and then Mr. Woodbury, and then Mr. DeFray, who are in, are city engineer, and, um, sometimes our code enforcement officer, um, Mark Woodruff would attend as well, um, so...
So if we, if we assign a city council person to this, and the council is amenable to it, then I, I don't think there, there would be a detraction by doing so. If the council decides that it's not necessary, because we do have all that level of expertise, then so be it. I'm not, you know, uh, I'm advocating for it, I, I think it would create a little bit more transparency, but, uh, let, let's let the council decide on this.
Okay, so I will open it for a motion for human action either.
May I, but just, just bring up one quick question to talk before we start this. So, uh, we all know that there's going to be a change in the council, you know, just a couple of, of seats are turning over the next, would it be more prudent to bring this up and after that's occurred, so we know who those, that available pool of, of persons?
That is an admirable suggestion. And wish I had the prescience to, 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 to think of it myself, but I failed to do so, the lateness of the hour maybe.
Well, here's the thing, though, our, our city attorney actually has left for somewhere, but, you know, we, there has been some concerns with council members attending, um, you know, develop, oh, good, you just popped in, I'm putting you on the spot, buddy. Um, we were talking, come back here. Uh, we're talking about seven point 13, and we have discussed about, uh, well, there, there really isn't an actual council-related committee, but there is already currently a committee with staff, which is the city engineer, you, and city planner, and sometimes Mark Woodruff, our, our code enforcement, and obviously our city administrator would attend, and not often that the city council attends these meetings specifically, and so, Mr., Councilmember Tucker is believing, or believes that, uh, needs to be like an appointed council member that needs to attend these meetings, and so I think that we talked about before in the past about having council members attending those types of meetings, um, that could be a problem, um, you know, it's, normally they, they come and present this information to the city council after it goes through the process. Yeah, there we go, and please put it on the mic, sir.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not a fan of it, and councils can do whatever they want to do. A, a lot of it, I know in the past, they will tell council members, "It's illegal and they can't do it," and that's because they don't want, because it can cause more problems for the attorney than anything. I don't do that. There is no law that says you cannot go, or you cannot go, or you cannot go, or you cannot go, or you cannot go, talk to a developer. I am not a fan of it, because I don't trust developers. As soon as you are talking to them and you, it's something that you may like, and you kind of be a fan of, and it's still in its infancy, in other words, but you say you like it, you're going to hear that every time, "But when we met, you approved it, when we met, you liked it, when we met, you said you voted in favor of it." No, wait, that's not what I said, but that's what you're going to hear. So I, I like to protect my council by advising them, you know, not to do that. Again, nothing illegal about it, if you did, if you want to do it, you know, I, I would still call me up and visit with me a little bit beforehand, uh, you know, take some caution when you do that, um, always never meet with them by yourself, um, you know, um, you know, have Conrad or Asa or somebody, you know, there with you, so that's like, "Well, no, wait a minute, this is what we talked about, that is not what, what we discussed," kind of, you know, that type of thing. I mean, you never go see a used car salesman by yourself, you always take somebody with you. Same thing with...
So, I apologize, I thought you were done.
Okay.
Are you done? I didn't mean to cut you off. Okay. So, I think it always kind of just comes back to a little bit of transparency. You pointed out that a council member by themselves definitely shouldn't meet alone. Um, let me ask a question to Conrad, if you could, please answer, um, typically who sits in the meetings right now? Let's just take the last one, um, the last one I recall hearing about, um, by default, was last Friday, or Friday, rather, with, uh, the webs, um, and two council members were a part of that meeting. I was never aware there was going to be a meeting, I can assume that the other two that weren't a part of that meeting weren't aware of it either. So the reason that Mr. Tucker is asking for this is to eliminate that kind of stuff, so, because from that meeting on Friday, I haven't been briefed, I haven't been notified, I don't know what to place in that meeting. I'm going to assume the other council members don't either, except for the two that attended. So if Mr. Tucker is asking again for transparency to allow us to all know what's going on, I don't see that being a problem. Um, so when that does come to a vote, uh, I think that's very important to have a, if, if council members are going to be a part of it, then maybe an assigned council member should be there, and then that allows a, that person to know all the correspondence that's come with it, um, as Councilmember Tucker said, to mirror the water, uh, situation, uh, or that committee for him to be a part of. It, it just does, it just kind of is an extension to that, uh, and, and I think it is another segue to rebuild trust back into the community, you know, because there is talk of, well, they met with this person, or I saw them with that person. Just eliminate it, and by eliminating it, you follow what Councilmember Tucker is wanting to put in place here. I don't see that being a problem. Uh, it should never be a problem, actually, that we have some transparency and knowledge of what's going on, because right now, well, I didn't know about the meeting, I, I won't speak for the other two.
Okay, so, I'm just going to go ahead and break the ice. So this past week was actually quite interesting. Speaking of transparency, yes, Mr. Councilmember McNeil did show up on this particular day, who also apparently was trying to schedule a meeting with the web to have coffee, and he was seen outside the, the city count, City Hall discussing alone without city administration. Now, as far as other council...
I told him I wouldn't meet with him until another council member is present. That is my exact words when he tried to set up the meeting. I told him, "I will not meet with you until another council member is present." I have it in text as well, and I'll tell you this further, I was walking to my vehicle and he asked some questions, and I told him there at the same time, "I cannot meet with you until I get another council member present, period." That's how that went. Now you can continue, but the item is, the item is to be discussed, it's not about breaking the ice. The item is to be discussed exactly how it is. Mr. Holla, you can call upon an order.
Now, as far as the discussion that we had, which is going to be brought up with our mayor present, with our attorney present, in the entire council in executive session, hopefully at the next meeting, so that you're aware of what that discussion was, because it is kind of concerning, um, for this council. So, that's where I will leave it at that, because it will deal with some legal issues. Now, is there any, would you like to have a, a, a motion for seven point 13?
Make a motion to, uh, assign a, a city council member to, uh, whatever we're going to call it, to the Development Review Committee, if we've created that.
The review committee, the staff, right?
The staff.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion about this motion?
More government is not the answer, like, it's not the answer.
It's not more government, but that's fine.
Any other discussion on this motion? Okay, go ahead, and, um, who, whoever is in favor for this motion, seven point three?
Aye.
Who opposes this?
Nay.
Nay. Motion carries? And then, um, who was the person you think? You did it again! Yes, it's just, to the next meeting, it's fine.
Let's just...
Okay, so what we're saying, because they're nose mics, we're, we're talking about maybe like creating a, a Development Review Committee?
And assigning a individual to that.
And assigning an individual council member, okay, thank you. Okay, moving on... Okay, moving on to update, seven point fourteen, update on all water-related issues. I have none. It's already ten nineteen, and we are needing to go discuss about updates, discussion, direction of staff. Can you mention about the success of the Easter event before?
We will hope to have a presentation for the next city council meeting. But we had hundreds of people here. We had five thousand eggs. We had six or seven huge bags of Costco candy. We had tons of kids. I think we had a good time by pretty much everyone. We had a good DJ. Had a bounce house. Had a lot of fun, a lot of vendors and food trucks and stuff. So it was a fun event for the cities.
Okay, any reports from the council, Councilmember McNeil?
I don't have any reports.
Councilmember McLanahan. None? Okay, Councilmember Day?
Nothing to report.
Okay, Councilmember Tucker. And I'm already spent. Thank you so much for attending this meeting. I am adjourning this meeting at ten twenty.